The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to this, which is the fourth day of public hearing, twenty-eight of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. In this public hearing, we are considering violence against and abuse of people with disability in public places. We commence with the acknowledgement of country. We wish to acknowledge the Jaggora and Turbo people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land on which the city of Brisbane is now located and on which this hearing is taking place. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to all First Nations people who are following these proceedings, either from the Brisbane Hearing Room or via the live broadcast. Yes, Ms Bennet?
Thank you, Commissioner. This morning, we have a panel comprising three police officers. We have present in the Hearing Room Assistant Commissioner Fellows of South Australia Police, Senior Sergeant Picard of Queensland Police, and I trust that in a moment, it will be Acting Deputy Commissioner Cook from New South Wales will become present there.
I think we have Acting Deputy Commissioner Cook on the line now.
Thank you. If I could ask that the witnesses be sworn off then?
Yes. Thank you very much, Commissioner Fellows, Commissioner Cook and Senior Sergeant Picard for coming to the Royal Commission today, either in person or virtually. We appreciate the assistance you are providing to the Royal Commission. We have statements that have been prepared or answers to questions that have been posed, and of course, we have read those. I'll ask in a moment, Ms Bennet, to ask you some questions, but in the meantime, if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, she will administer the oaths or affirmation, as the case may be. I understand that Commissioners Fellows and Cook, you wish to take the oath, so I'll ask for the oath to be administered first.
Assistant Commissioner Fellows, Acting Deputy Commissioner Cook, I will read you both the oath. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. Thank you very much. I'll now ask for the affirmation to be administered to Senior Sergeant Picard.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms Bennet to ask members of the panels some questions.
Thank you for appearing. I'm going to ask each of your questions in turn and direct traffic between you as we go. Starting with you, Assistant Commissioner Fellows, you've been present in the Hearing Room this week. Are you in a position to offer any reflections on the evidence that you've heard this week?
Yes, I suppose, if I'm frank, it's been quite harrowing to listen to. I think as police, we have a statutory obligation to protect the community and fundamentally to protect the vulnerable. And I suppose my instinct on Monday when we first started hearing evidence was, you know, we need to be out there arresting more people for these types of things. But as the week has progressed, I've probably concluded that we can't arrest our way out of this problem. It's a complex issue, and I think the answer lies somewhere in a structured approach, a framework for activity which is coordinated across a range of different areas that need to be joined very well together. And I think that's going to take some time, but it's achievable.
We'll unpack that in the course of your evidence. Turning to you, Senior Sergeant, I have no criticism if you've been unable to observe the hearings, but to the extent, have you been able to watch or be briefed upon any parts of the hearings this week?
I've been watching the live feed as much as I could.
Thank you. And do you have any reflections you care to offer?
Some of the stories were absolutely saddening, the fact that people living their lives day to day are dealing with this sort of abuse in a public area. I think that there's going to be some great learnings to come from what we've heard during this week, in particular, the courage of those people to stand up and speak forward. And if we are looking for change, cultural change, it has to start with understanding lived experience. So that's what I appreciate.
Acting Deputy Commissioner, can you see and hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Again, I understand you're an operational police officer, and to the extent you haven't been able to watch this week, I make no criticism of that. But have you had the opportunity to be briefed on or to observe any of the evidence this week?
Yes. Well, whilst I've not seen the evidence, I've read those documents that were provided to us in the bundle, and particularly those lived experience statements, which are enlightening, certainly raising a number of difficulties, which is the experience of people. So that experience is a reality for us, that we need to take heed of and build into our process. It's very clear that there is a need in terms of access and assurance. And I take the point of Assistant Commissioner Fellows, they're looking at how that access can be achieved effectively.
Thank you. And thank you all for those reflections. Can I now understand, Assistant Commissioner Fellows, what areas of responsibility do you hold that relate to people with disability in your role?
Currently, not anything specifically, although one of the areas under my command is police prosecutions for South Australia, I think, which has some relevance to discussions this week. Previously, I was in charge of human resources for South Australian Police, within which was the disability, sorry, the diversity and inclusion branch. And I oversaw the development of the disability access and inclusion plan for South Australian Police. Prior to that, I was in charge of crime service, and I oversaw the establishment of our public protection branch, which currently is where our vulnerable persons portfolio sits. So those, I guess, experiences over seven years give me some insight into the matters before the Commission.
And are you able to say whether or not you've had the benefit of the lived experience of people with disability in the development of some of those policies or procedures that you've just referred to?
Probably not personally, but the people that worked with me and for me, who have developed some of those things, certainly consulted widely in the community, particularly around the development of the Disability Access Inclusion Plan, which was part of the requirements for developing that plan in South Australia.
So, Senior Sergeant, your role, can you tell the Commissioners about the extent to which your role is connected with people with disability in the community?
So, I'm currently at the State Domestic Family Violence and Vulnerable Persons Unit. And my portfolio is that I'm the state coordinator for programs for mental health. So I sit alongside the senior sergeant who's in charge of programs and development for disabilities. But my background, for the last seven years, I've worked within prevention and intervention within Sunshine Coast District, looking at mental health intervention and vulnerable persons coordination. And that's inclusive of people with mental health crisis and issues, but also with intersections with disability, homelessness, domestic family violence, substance abuse. And I think a lot of, we're realising now, that within my role, a lot of the individuals that we have intersections with, we misidentify as having mental health. They actually sit on, as ASD or ADHD or psychosocial disabilities. So that's a learning that I've undertaken the last seven years. But it's only recently that we've gone, oh, okay, and we're starting to understand that we're misidentifying a number of people.
Acting Deputy Commissioner, can you identify any areas of your responsibility that are relevant to people with disability?
Yes. My substantive position is the commander of what we'd call Central Metropolitan Region. So it's effectively a third of the Sydney Basin. So I have ten police area commands, 2,500 of police under my command. In a corporate sense, I am the corporate sponsor for the community's portfolio. So New South Wales Police Force maintains corporate sponsorships at the executive level to provide executive level focus upon issues of concern for policing. The aging disability and homeless portfolio is one area specifically within my community's portfolio, which also encompasses multiculturalism, LGBT issues and customer service. So if you like, I'm the executive portal in support of our relationships with people suffering with disability and representing the executive in driving our performance in terms of service to that community.
Can you tell us, Acting Deputy Commissioner, we've heard some positive evidence about the hate crimes unit in New South Wales. Can you tell the Commissioners about how that relates to the groups that you've just mentioned as falling within your community's portfolio?
So the Engagement in Hate Crime Unit is a unit within, in fact, our Counter Terrorism Command. It is responsible for hate crime and a range of issues that occur in and around that across varying forms of hate crime, but including involving those people with a disability. That's a command within, as I said, the CT Command, which is comprised of police, so operational police, who police the community in that particular respect, as do other offices, and supported by also non-sworn police who support them in a policy sense. So my intersection with the Engagement in Hate Crime Unit runs across each of my portfolios, particularly in the multicultural space, the LGBT, and also the aging homelessness and those with a disability.
Is that hate crime unit model one that has, in your view, some potential to be expanded to capture some of the violence and abuse we've heard about this week, that is in public places against people with a disability?
Well, it certainly does that in fact now. That unit is responsible, for example, for an advertising campaign, which will go live, I believe, in November, December this year, which specifically targets the reporting of hate crime across each of the areas of concern. So those will be out in the broader media, I'm told, later this year. But that's about people being able to identify hate crime across the range of areas, and then encouraging people to report instances of such crimes so that it can be dealt with. Now, many parts of the organisation play a particular role, the Engagement in Hate Crime Unit specifically in this area, the crime prevention units within each police area command within my region have a function as well. So it is coming together, which is why the corporate sponsors' role is important, because it draws together those parts of the organisation who contribute in some way to the matter of assisting people, vulnerable communities, people who require assistance across the broader spectrum of policing.
And is there a model for sharing your learnings around that model with other police forces in Australia?
Look, certainly, there would be, and I know that there are ongoing conversations across policing, across the range of issues. So absolutely, there would be opportunity to share among agencies, as we do often, as I said, across a range of that.
Assistant Commissioner, you talked about, I think, the sharing of information as something that you think is going to be important here. Can you tell the Commissioners about what you think it's going to be important to share information about between police forces?
Yeah, I think, you know, the systems and the models that exist, and I think police generally are good at doing that in terms of not trying to reinvent the wheel in terms of systems and structures. And we look both across states and overseas for ways in which policing is being done, to find new and advanced ways. And so there's always that element of trying to be consistent. But at the same time, every jurisdiction has its own nuances. New South Wales has a particular different focus due to its size compared to perhaps South Australia or Tasmania. And our ability to centralise unique types of policing activity centrally is perhaps a bit more limited than what a bigger police force might be. But, you know, we can still do certain things, it's just in a smaller scale.
And speaking there of the smaller scale, is it the case that that's really a reason to develop some centralised elements, so that each of the states can benefit from, if you like, the sunk cost of developing a best practice elements that can be rolled out in each jurisdiction?
Yes. And I think, you know, we have a public protection branch, which takes portfolio functions, vulnerable people being one. But what that does is it gives a connection point or the pathway into the organisation for other agencies, such as Adult Safeguarding Unit in South Australia. They have a connection point to make contact, which then you can use that as a funnel to get the information in the right direction.
And, Senior Sergeant, I take it that you'd agree with your colleagues that this is something where sharing information would be a benefit?
Absolutely. And just to refer a little bit more locally, because we're talking about within our state command, even though we hold different portfolios under that state command, being domestic family violence, disability, elder abuse, mental health, victims assist, Queensland, white ribbon, the sharing of those learnings.
I'm very sorry to interrupt. Could I ask you to speak up a little bit?
Oh, my apologies.
Not at all.
Grateful for that. Usually, usually, I'm asked to keep quiet, not to speak up. I do apologise.
Not at all.
So across those portfolios and vulnerabilities, what we do learn is that we can learn experiences from each other's portfolios. For example, use the learnings that we have at the moment within domestic and family violence and the Commission of Enquiries and apply that to disabilities, because the same themes are arriving from the learnings from the Women's Safety Justice Task Force that we hear at the Commission today. It's about confidence in reporting. It's about accessibility. It's about re-traditizing individuals. So we have that learning already systematically within our organisation. What we look for is opportunities to share those learnings absolutely across the nation.
You spoke about confidence in reporting, and that's been something we've heard some evidence about this week. I mean, would you accept there's been a historic trust deficit between some communities and the police?
Well, that's evident. It's evident from the voices of lived experience. And I think if we don't listen closely to that, we're going to miss the mark.
I should be clear, and I include specifically that people with a lived experience of disability have a historical, perhaps, trust deficit with some police forces.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that even expands more greatly to institutions, whether that's hospital and health system and policing responses. So there is a lack, I guess, a lack of confidence in that reporting. And I think to really start the question is, how do we address that lack of confidence so that we can get the reporting, because we need the reporting? Without the reporting of the incidents from policing, how do we create preventative measures? Or how do we even respond? And how do we investigate? It's hard to know.
And I'd like to discuss some of those models in a moment. But Assistant Commissioner, would you accept there's a historic trust deficit that needs to be, I guess, overcome?
Without doubt. It doesn't just sit in disability. You know, we've experienced it with domestic violence over the years. We've had a huge focus, as most jurisdictions have, on domestic violence. We know it's under-reported extensively for a great number of reasons. And, you know, there were a couple of occasions this week, listening to some of the evidence, where, you know, I heard people say, I didn't think there was anything that the police could do about it, because I didn't have the registration number or the evidence that was needed. But I was sitting there as a police officer going, yeah, but we can access CCTV, we can do facial recognition, there's a whole range of investigative tools that we can do to identify offenders. It doesn't, you don't have to come with the brief. But again, that's a knowledge and awareness thing for anybody, not just people with disability. But I accept your proposition, yes.
And Acting Deputy Commissioner, would you take a different view from New South Wales, or would you broadly accept that there's a historic trust deficit there?
No, I would accept that, having heard or read particularly some of the evidence. But that is certainly a matter. And I think that, again, though, is for us as a group and here today, a great opportunity by police forces appearing and acknowledging that, but talking about those ways that there are available for people to undo, sort of overcome that issue of the advertising campaign I spoke of earlier, the work of our Engagement in Hate Crime Unit, the Crime Prevention Units within commands. It's certainly the opportunities that we have working in partnership with our Aging and Disability Commission about providing information through a community. One comment I would make, you spoke of centralisation, and I absolutely agree in terms of leadership and the sponsorship arrangement that we have in New South Wales does that. But it's also important that we recognise that there are many stakeholders, service providers, within the local community at the ground level who deal very, very well with police area commands and police on the ground. And they are that first port of call for community. And so it's very important that we recognise that much of that work on the ground done is very, very important. And at that local level, that's a place I'm certainly keen on seeing that we're continuing to break down these issues in terms of reporting and develop that relationship, really building confidence.
Professor Asquith gave some evidence that New South Wales had been successful, in particular with, or it had some significant success with the LGBTQ+ community and that community connection. Is there anything from that model that can be adapted to the disability community, in your view?
I think it is, in fact, the same, and that is exactly where we are heading. And that relies on that same model, working with a corporate sponsor, me, across both of these things, down through my function as a region commander to my police commanders, to ensure that that's important to them, which makes it important to the police on the ground, and that we provide that support to community. It has worked well, and I'd be very confident that we can continue that work, working with people with a disability.
Commissioner Fellows, South Australia, if you go back far enough, not necessarily that far, has a terrible record of hate crimes directed at LGBTQI people. How has South Australia overcome the trust deficit for that community, assuming it has?
Yes, Chair, we have a network within SAPOLO, we refer to them as GLOs, gay and lesbian liaison officers, that are police officers who have volunteered as part of their normal duties to be a representative or a liaison officer to that community. And they've been in place for some time. I think it's been referred to this week as a model that could be picked up for disability. We are certainly well down the path of implementing disability engagement officers within our districts. We're in consultation on that at the moment, and it's part of our action plan to implement that. So I think that's the model that we're trying to pick up. And the GLO network has certainly had a good impact in terms of, it just gives people the pathway into the organisation to either get advice or make a report or be confident that their issues will be heard.
Thank you.
And the GLO network, just to pick up on that model, are those police who undertake general policing duties in parallel to their GLO responsibilities?
Yes.
And are they people from within the LGBTQI community?
Some are, and some are not. And we ask for volunteers, and some people just have a passion for representing people in the community, and they take on that responsibility.
And is there any plan that disability liaison officers be people with an experience of disability themselves?
Not specifically, but we wouldn't exclude that. We think that the knowledge and the expertise is the most important thing, and the ability of a police officer to open the door to other areas of the organisation that are necessary. And if they have lived experience, that's terrific, a bit like the GLO network, but not necessarily as a prerequisite to those roles.
And, Senior Sergeant, sorry, before I leave you, Assistant Commissioner, when is it planned for that liaison office to take effect?
We had hoped to have already had it in place. Covid has slowed us down in a range of areas, but we're out into community consultation at the moment. So if it's not before the end of this calendar year, it'll be certainly in the early of the new year.
And is that that community consultation including people with disability?
Yes.
Senior Sergeant, is there an equivalent in Queensland of a disability liaison office or a plan to have officers in that role?
Within the State Domestic Family Violence Command, there is a senior sergeant. So there's a portfolio of disabilities, which has a senior sergeant who is the state coordinator. And to give a little bit of history, as well as an AO4 who's a projects officer, and to give a little bit of history behind that, we, the command, oh, sorry, the State Domestic Family Violence and Vulnerable Persons Unit was established 2015, but it sat under a different command. It was Community Contact Command. In 2019, we stood the command up to sit separate. So what's happened there is the temporary positions have now become permanent. So I'm very happy to say that the role of that senior sergeant, she started Monday of this week. So at the moment, within the State Domestic Family Violence Unit, we're at a transition and building stage. So that person's responsible for looking at the strategic and political intents of the whole government and designing programmes and projects for our district vulnerable persons unit to address an increase of response in confidence in policing vulnerabilities, particularly with disabilities and elder abuse.
And so a dedicated liaison, something that will be considered as part of that process, is that?
So within the states at this point in time, so we have fifteen districts across the state of Queensland, and all of which have been promised domestic and family violence units. Because of the sheer volumes of domestic and family violence that we get as an organisation, there's over 200,000 calls of service per year, a lot of the resources is pushed towards domestic and family violence. But what we do have is, within those units, we have a mental health intervention coordinator. Now, we have over 60,000 calls a year as a police organisation toward mental health. And we're able to track that because of the job codes assigned to mental health job codes. So within these units sits a mental health intervention coordinator. But they are more so intersections of people that sit in the vulnerabilities. So they are a liaison of type for vulnerabilities, not just mental health, but toward disabilities as well. I think that it would be great if we could design a purpose-built, dedicated role within our districts that looks at disabilities as we do with mental health.
So it's fair to say there's opportunity to expand in that direction?
Absolutely.
And Acting Deputy Commissioner, New South Wales has aged crime prevention officers, is that right?
That's right, yes.
And they have within, well, yeah, can you tell the Commissioners about what falls within their scope of responsibility?
So they are part of our crime prevention unit, which is a unit within every police command and police district. and police district across the state. Their predominant role is to assist commands delivering of service to the aging population, those with a disability and the homeless population. They work with crime prevention officers, including domestic and family liaison officers, generalist crime prevention officers and youth and other engagement officers, driving the commands' response in support of community. So I think one of the things in terms of reporting is that whilst we have the specialist officers at the time, most incidents are in fact tended as the general response to a court assistance, which will be generalist policing, who will attend to take a report. Now, depending on the nature of that report, that may well be funneled to, in a serious manner, to a criminal investigation unit. It may be retained by that officer as part of his or the caseload. The role of the crime prevention teams is to provide that underlying support and connection, supporting the person and supporting investigators or those investigating the matter to ensure that where its appropriate services can be provided, where they're necessary, to support that victim or person in otherwise need of care.
And that depends, doesn't it, Acting Deputy Commissioner, on the frontline police officer identifying this as a matter which involves a person with a disability that will require some support, is that right?
Absolutely, and that's why part of the training at recruit level and then continuous training through the life cycle of an officer into and including specialist functions includes specific training around the recognisation of people with a disability and those actions that that might be undertaken where they are supporting such people.
How many aged crime prevention officers are there at present?
There are 12 across the state at present, and I've been tasked with conducting an evaluation of the role and function of those officers, which is in scoping at the moment.
And where are they, are they located in a geographically centralised place or are they spread out across the state?
No, they're in 12 police commands at present.
And what's a police command?
Police command, you would suggest, is in a geographical area of Sydney, for example, the St George area.
So there are 12 geographic areas which are each described as a command and have a, and each of those has an aged crime prevention officer, is that right?
We think that's right, as I said, as part of the crime prevention unit.
Can I just clarify, are there only 12 commands across New South Wales? Or is there only 12 commands which have CPOs?
There are 12 commands which have aged crime prevention officers within them. There are 57 police commands across the state.
So not every command has one of these officers?
No, they do not.
When they were announced in 2018, I believe the commitment was to have one in every command. Was there some reason why that hasn't been realised?
That is, I'm undertaking, as I've said, I've been tasked to undertake an evaluation of the role and function at present, which is within scoping at the moment. But I think, again, I'll draw your attention to the fact that whilst I understand that commitment, the officers are part and one of a crime prevention unit within every police command across the state.
Assistant Commissioner, I understand from the materials that South Australia have some stations that are accredited as assisting people with communication difficulties, is that right?
Not stations, but people. So police officers that have undertaken additional course of training. Under our legislation, we have vulnerable witness legislation, which, where a person is unable to give a coherent account of their experiences, then if they are interviewed by a person who's trained to the level required, then in, once the matter progresses to court, their evidence in chief can be given without that person having to attend court. So we have something like 600 or 700 of police officers trained in, with those interviewing skills.
There's been some evidence this week that some people, particularly people with an intellectual disability or cognitive impairment, might not be seen as entirely credible to a reporting officer, and that's a reason that they feel unable to report. Is it, are those officers trained to sort of combat that kind of preconceived notion? That kind of prejudice?
Yes, I think that goes with it. Training, the training is focused on the best way to communicate with a person with communication difficulties, but with that, it's inherent in the fact that, you know, that there's a way to build trust with a person who you're interviewing to enable them to communicate what's happened to them.
Is that concern that we've heard a little bit this week something that you've heard of before in your career as a police officer?
Yes, it is. And in fact, one of the training tools that we use at the Police Academy for recruits is a video of a lived experience of a person with cerebral palsy, who, her experience was that she'd attended a police station on a number of occasions but was turned away because the police thought she was intoxicated. In fact, it was her disability that was the problem. And so just being able to communicate that to recruits to get them to understand that not, everything is not always as it seems when you're dealing with people on the first instance. So those sorts of things I think are really valuable in training for new police officers and any police officer, really.
And I take it you didn't mean that cerebral palsy was a problem, the response to that?
Correct, that's right, yes.
Senior Sergeant, are you aware of that as an issue that you've come across in your role?
Yeah, I think, I think the way that our organisation's moving is ensuring that communication, the one thing that we are reliant upon in our careers every single day, the communication that what we rely upon in our careers every single day is better trained. So we teach policing with influence, which is a behavioural influence stairway model, which is taken from negotiator response and applied to police negotiators. And we're broadly educating recruits on that manner of communication. And if, it's about taking the time and understanding someone's needs. And it looks at building rapport through active listening and empathising with the individual to therefore create behavioural change. And if that behavioural change is getting better trust, then it's worked. So we use that model of communication more so on our frontline, but that's the model of communication that we use within our domestic and family violence units, the vulnerable persons units, because it's difficult to engage with vulnerable people that have lost faith in policing. And often the case is our unit will get requests, actually engage with these individuals, these vulnerable individuals, to try to get them supports that they require.
Well, on the subject of supports, what about accessible reporting pathways? So we've talked a lot about the trust deficit, but assume that's not a barrier for a moment. What about making the act of reporting something that's accessible for people with all needs?
After hearing the professor in Tasmania?
Yes, Professor Asquith, yes.
That was a brilliant model whereby the reporting of vulnerable persons with disabilities could report to an external agency in order to be validated around their complaints, their issues. I think there's a great opportunity to buy into that sort of programme whereby then we could have a system where those reports can be directly then reported to police. You know, whether that be on a platform that individuals feel more comfortable telling their stories. Because at the moment, we do have accessibility to report incidents online, and Covid actually pushed a lot of our reporting online through Police Link reporting. But there's also other avenues, because people also feel comfortable talking to a person. So vulnerable persons can contact Police Link and request for a client service personnel to guide them through making complaint or making a report to police. And then we have the other standardised approaches through the National Relay Service, and you can opt to actually ask to communicate through the email and SMS approaches. So we are looking at those separate platforms. And I think too, we developed then for domestic and family violence about how we could better engage with our vulnerable persons that were impacted by domestic and family violence to report safely, and that's a modelling that we could use for disabilities. But again, this is something that would have consultation with lived experience.
Acting Deputy Commissioner, are you able to speak to the steps that New South Wales has taken to make reporting accessible to people with disability?
Yes, there's much information available, public casing on our internet site, that is quite easy to navigate and provides advice to people on how to report things. We're finding our relationship with the Aging and Disability Commission very beneficial in terms of third-party reporting, and then that relationship and information sharing which occurs between the two agencies. There is, whilst trust very clearly is an issue, and that is about confidence, I think, and us providing confidence to the community that they can report and that the reports will be heard. And that is also about developing and continuing to develop the relationship at the command level among stakeholder groups who are frequently interacting with community and who become aware of matters, who can bring these matters to us in a third-party type sense for investigation or highlight or for sharing among themselves to ensure that a person who might be requiring a service, which might not necessarily be a policing service, can be connected.
Can I raise a general issue which arises out of this discussion? We've heard during the week quite a lot about hate crimes, and that's been referred to today. In New South Wales, the hate crime units, as I understand it, are within terrorism units, which rather suggests that the original concern was the relationship between hate crimes of a very serious kind, leading to the possibility of acts of terrorism, perfectly understandable concern. But we've heard hate crime and the hate crimes, and Professor Asquith, I think, preferred the term targeted violence, but the way in which it's been used this week, including by people with lived experience, extends far beyond criminal behaviour. The kind of harassment and humiliation and so forth that we've heard about may not rise to the level of a crime. And it also may not be the kind of behaviour that is best responded to by a criminal prosecution. It may be there are many other ways of dealing, for example, with adolescent behaviour of that kind that may proceed more from ignorance than from anything else. Are we asking the police to do things that they're not necessarily equipped to do? And is this, is the answer in part is third-party reporting so that we're not asking the police to perform welfare roles that they may not be particularly well-equipped? And this is not a criticism, particularly well-equipped to perform. Is this something that you're concerned about? I don't mind who answers, as long as all three do.
Perhaps we'll start with the Acting Deputy Commissioner, and I'll run through it.
Thank you. Commissioner, yes, I agree. The hate crime unit, yes, born out of that initial sense. The broadening though of its scope, it is a recognition of the fact that hate crime extends not just in that CT-type space but across the range of community. And in fact, the definition for New South Wales Police in terms of hate crime names up a mental or physical disability as part of a concern. In terms of the general approach, I think it really rests upon good communication and engagement among the stakeholders, because many matters do not amount to a criminal offence. However, people are feeling unsafe. So if they are reporting to police at the initial phase, then that we need that and have that capacity through current arrangements, and I can only speak for New South Wales, that joined-up stakeholder engagement among police, local providers, to my engagement with Mr Fitzgerald at the Aging and Disability Commission at the executive level, retains that model or structure, if you like, that we can direct things where they might be best dealt with. So I think in terms of whether we're being asked to do things which aren't necessarily our bailiwick, I think that's life for police in many occasions. Could we look at another way of reporting? Potentially, yes.
And can you tell the commissioners a little bit about the nature of your relationship with the Aging and Disability Commission and how you do share information around these issues?
So, yes, the Aging and Disability Commission, I, as the executive sponsor, meet with Mr Fitzgerald and only in this week, and I paraphrase that by saying, I'm new into the portfolio, so this is evolving in terms of my own personal involvement, but certainly sponsors before me engaging with the commission. Underlying me, I also have policy officers within our Crime Prevention Command who are tasked specifically into the Aging, Disability and Homes portfolio. So they also engage with the commission at the operational level. We have a memorandum of understanding between the two agencies which allows us to share information. And in fact, the commission have actually direct access to our policing operational system. They have read-only access to our police, if you'd like, incident recording system, we call it COPs. Every state has an equivalent system, so the commission have direct read-only access to that. There's very clear understanding, and in fact, the legislation governs that the commission has certain responsibilities where it takes reports which amount to, or they believe amount to, a criminal offence, and there are other arrangements in place contained within the MOU where they can refer matters to us, which bring upon us responsibility and vice versa. So it's actually quite a strong relationship between the two of us with regard to reports between the two agencies, direct to the ADC or from police as a reference to the ADC. The ADC also operates a number of, I think collaboratives would be the word, cooperatives, collaborative, which reaches down into local government areas. I think there are 16 or 17 such collaboratives at present operating. And police are present as part of those collaboratives. So at the ground level, and I'll speak, I think, the Canterbury-Bankstown Collective Council may well have been raised, that is, Canterbury-Bankstown is a local government area within New South Wales, within sort of inner western Sydney. So police, the Aging and Disability Commission, and a range of stakeholders within that local government area come together to discuss issues affecting the community within that area of responsibility. So that again, I think refers to the matters I spoke to about earlier. Down at the ground level, responsible agencies and stakeholders coming together to discuss how we are actually providing service across the community, which I think is very effective at that ground level, brings services within reach of people at the ground level, which builds relationships, which builds trust, which builds confidence, which can only assist, I think, the community in overcoming that deficit and then receiving the service that they require.
Thank you, and turning there, I'm going to return to talk about that model in a moment.
Could I, I'm sorry, I'd like to hear, please, what Commissioner Fellows and Senior Sergeant Pickard think? Pickard think about the issues that have been raised?
So I think that the chair originally asked about the, whether or not this kind of model, I think, assists people with lived experience that extends beyond criminal behaviour to the kind of harassment and humiliation that we've heard about this week. You able to comment on that?
Pick up your original statement, Chair, about this label, if you like, of hate crime. And it's probably something that's challenged me this week, listening to the evidence, because I think everyone's been grappling with, what is it? And we've got legislation in South Australia in the Sentencing Act, which mandates the sentencing judge or magistrate, they must take into account that if the crime's been motivated by hate or prejudice. And I think that prejudice type concept sits more comfortably with some of the evidence that we've heard this week. I'm not sure that the hatred thing really fits and maybe doesn't fit with what the community think is happening or would understand of hate crimes. So I add that for context. The issue for police, and you've pointed to it, is that not all of the behaviours we've heard about this week reach that criminal threshold. Now, I guess we can change legislation to make, to lower the bar, if you like, but where it sits at the moment, we don't meet that criminal threshold. So we don't, we don't have an intelligence picture really of what's going on. We've got, for those that are reported, that meet the prima facie case for a crime, we will have that. What we don't have is that sort of bigger picture of that some of the really terrible things that have been discussed this week that actually don't become crimes. And I think this is where this third-
Or perhaps ought not to be treated as crimes because there are other ways of dealing with them.
Correct. But there is always an intelligence picture that police can use in a prevention sense. That's what police do very well. But you need a, excuse me, but you need an information source. There's a model that I quite like around retail theft, which is a platform that, it's called Aura, it's run by a private company and it's from New Zealand now in Australia, where retail companies are given access to this portal. And they upload all sorts of information about who's stealing from their shop. It's contained to the retail owners and people there, and it becomes this intelligence picture. Police are given access to it for free. It's not a crime reporting thing, although police can reach in and do so, but it provides a very good intelligence picture of what's going on around retail theft. They upload videos and photos and information. And it's just another example of a third party platform that whilst doesn't create crime reporting, what it does is give the big picture, whether there's suspicion of a crime or an actual crime, or just intelligence about individuals who are involved in organised theft. So I think something along that line in this topic may actually assist to paint the picture, because it's not the individual incident that we are in or out on. It's the broader, it's the broader impact and we've heard about the cumulative effect. So I think that's, that's the gap.
Yes, thank you.
And is that, that model, I'll come to you in a moment, Senior Sergeant, but is that a model that allows you to identify, for example, hotspots or areas of peak concern? I'm not saying that exists in this space, but is that something that it does?
It does, because we have our intel analysts have access to that and they can pick up trends and it might be that, you know, there's no evidence attached to a particular piece of information, but when you put five or six or eight of those pieces together with other information that we have, all of a sudden, you've got evidence.
And it sounds as though it's something that doesn't create a burden on the person reporting. Is that right?
No, because it's in their interest to report it. They are sharing information with their own industry, in fact, about people that are targeting, you know, it might be Bunnings or Big W that go around and steal particular items, keep a watch out for this particular person. So, and it's contained to, access is limited to the people that should be accessing it.
And Senior Sergeant, are you able to comment on, based on your operational experience, how best to respond to these, this kind of conduct that might not reach the criminal threshold?
Yeah, I think the answer lies in partnerships, because what we see is this is a greater problem just, more so than just responding. We've got to look at intervention and prevention modelling to address really what we're looking at is shifting, shifting culture or shifting mindsets. Because it, holding the perpetrator accountable is vital, absolutely vital. But ideally, what we want to do is we want to affect positive behaviour change and shifting attitudes. And this can be done in a number of ways. And it's got to be done through the voice of the expectations of the victim. That's first and foremost. But I think behavioural change can come through advocacy, it can come through awareness, it can come through purpose-built behavioural change programmes. And of course, it can come through enforcement action by police, or it can be a combination of those. So I think when we look at it, because it's such a complex spectrum of offending, we have to look at what we're addressing at that given time. And in all honesty, through our internal and external partnerships with key stakeholders and community, who is best to respond at that given time as well?
And is it fair, Senior Sergeant, that we need not pick one? We could have, for example, a third party reporting process and a police response where it's appropriate and they can work together?
I can tell you that hubbing is, hubbing, my apologies, working within a co responding model is absolutely critical to address problems that are multifaceted. And we've designed that through mental health with our co responder models. Because as a policing organisation, I do apologise, I keep referring back to mental health modelling, but we've learnt from this over a number of years, because we've gotten it wrong. And the best findings we can have is when we get things wrong, we can adjust. So with our mental health, and you talked about chair inappropriate services being deployed, what was happening with mental health crisis is we were sending armed police to mental health consumers that had missed an appointment or a depot or their medication or they weren't complying with treatment authorities. And from the onset, I think the community says, well, that's expected because there may be risks assigned to that individual. But what we end up doing is we end up escalating that individual because they've missed a medical appointment. So in a co responder type atmosphere, what you have is we as police own a situational crisis that may be occurring. And we hold the safety around the individual and the community, absolutely. But what we don't own is the clinical pathways to that individual's care. That's either owned by health or mental health or a number of non-government organisations that provide support services to that individual. We play a vital role, but I think we have to understand as organisations what our roles specifically are. And then we have to ask agencies to join us. So collaboration would be the key.
So returning to you, acting deputy commissioner, and that, I take it you, from your answer earlier, that you agree that collaboration with other interested and associated agencies is important to this? Is that fair?
Absolutely. And it needs to be, our third party reporting, whatever, it needs to be also skilled and from within the sector, in my view, then that for the very reasons that we just heard. Safety of the individuals and community is the primary concern for police. The range of other supports that we can provide come with that following an incident or an occurrence. But it's important that, I would be concerned in some situations where people unskilled or self-necessarily reporting, were reporting in a system that might well miss issues that skilled people might pick up. Because whilst I agree with Assistant Commissioner Fellows, we have, you know, a hate crime, which sometimes becomes a colloquialism for behaviour. But there are a range of other offences that may well also sit salt in intimidation and stalking within New South Wales, offensive conduct. So the reporting needs to be of a type that we build confidence in community, it is easy and accessible, but also is triageable, so that we are providing the right response, including the law enforcement response. And then, as my friend from Queensland indicated, that collaboration that sits underneath that reporting, providing service, which generally would fall into either clinical or social support of some other nature.
So let me see if I can identify the elements that you're suggesting might be important to the response. Needs to have expertise, presumably in terms of identifying crimes and identifying an appropriate response. Needs to have community trust and engagement. It needs to have, and it needs to have the connections to make the right connections to the right organisation. Is that a fair summary?
Through that process, yes.
Yes, through that. So the person doesn't just get referred to somewhere else and left, they get a, they get a warm referral through the system in the appropriate way.
And that the intent of the person reporting is also part of that, that process.
So in the third party reporting discussion that we've had with Professor Asquith and with you and your colleagues today, there's been a suggestion of a body that would provide a pathway for that kind of reporting. Is the model of the Aging and Disability Commission one model that meets a number of those criteria?
Yes, it does. And the legislation guides their activity as well.
And obviously, Mr Fitzgerald will be speaking to us later, but is that also somewhere where you can collaborate over the development of educational responses and proactive responses that have a policing and a non-policing element?
Yes, in fact, the Aging and Disability Commission staff contribute to the development of our training products. They also attend training courses and provide information to those undergoing training.
Assistant Commissioner Fellows, you have an adult safeguarding unit in South Australia. Do you have, can you tell the commissioners briefly about that body and how it interacts with your work?
Yes, so they sit under, I think it's the Department of Health and Aging. They are a statutory body and they have certain powers within their legislation. We have an MOU that exists between us to exchange information and that happens very readily. And they also have a hotline number. So we've heard questions this week about the national Commonwealth hotline number, which we wouldn't refer to in South Australia because we have our own state-based one through the Adult Safeguarding Unit. But to your point on the third party reporting, at the moment, that doesn't pick up what we're talking about here. And one of the elements, I think you were just trying to list some elements there of what something like that would look like. I think the other key part of it is analysis, because if you don't have the ability to analyse what that information's telling you, you can't then predict or take action in another way. And again, a lot of this stuff might be out of the hands of police because it's not the police function, but if the analysis shows that things below the criminal threshold are happening a lot in a particular location or in particular groups of people, action can be initiated in the community without even involving the police. And that's surely what we're actually trying to achieve, to achieve here.
Senior Sergeant, colleagues have provided a list of, a wish list of what this body would have in it. Do you have anything to add to what such a third party reporting model or intermediary model might bring to the table?
I think, I think the model will bring systems and people together, because across a lot of our portfolios for vulnerable persons, we expect the vulnerable person to come to us. With this sort of modelling, we're actually bringing the systems to the person. And I think that's important. But what we'll need is, we'll need coordination, a lot of coordination across agencies, both government and non-government, across the disability sector and across advocacy. So I think the importance there is having a look at that coordination at the start, because as you start to build that model and it's co-designed, it really has to be co-created. And that co-creation part's going to need the coordinators across those agencies to come together to understand the limitations and capacities of each agency, understand the perspectives of each agency and what we can bring as specialists.
Do you see it as a model that has utility in responding to the issues that the commission has heard about this week?
I think so, definitely. Because we spoke about, or I heard the commission speak about, you know, the fact of policing, police responses not meeting the expectation of the vulnerable person with disability. So there needs to be advocacy built into the reporting from the very start. I think that's very important. And then cross pollination of training and education about what each agency is important, is responsible for, is important as well. So that element of coordination would be something that I would be very interested in looking at how that would, would fit within our organisation.
Commissioners, those the questions I have for this panel, so I'd like to thank them for their time and expertise today.
Thank you very much. I'll invite my colleagues, if they have any questions, to put to the panel. And I'll start with Commissioner Galbulay.
Thank you very much for your responses. That was really interesting and valuable. Just to come back to, I think it was South Australia's experience, where you put an example out, I think about somebody with cerebral palsy being assumed to be drunk. And then thinking about what we heard yesterday about people with an intellectual disability not being deemed able to provide, you know, not being taken seriously. I'd like to know about the training, the ongoing training for police officers about these issues and people who don't communicate verbally, who have other ways of communicating. I'd like to know about training. Thanks for those cohorts, because they felt very left out or, or under attack by police officers because of their disability, when there's misunderstanding.
It's been, probably for me, listening this week, it's been, I'm wondering in terms of what is it that we should train police officers to do or be aware of? And I think one of the things we are good at in a disability sense is training, we can always do better, but training police officers in a communication sense. That's, that seems to be the focus of our training is how to communicate on the assumption that person with a disability has a communication issue or an access issue. What I think we've missed is training in the awareness of the impact of some of these crimes on people with a disability. And that's not evident in our training. Looking at it through the eyes of the people this week, that impact on them is immense. And if you don't appreciate that, when you hear the one-off incident, it's very low level in terms of a policing response, but to that person, it's immense. And the courage to actually come and report it the first time might be the end of a series of things that have happened and having photographs taken of you and being videoed, that, that is an awful thing to happen to someone. And so I think the training actually needs to shift to the impact on the people and the responses that are available to deal with it, rather than just how do we communicate with someone who cannot communicate at the right level? I think we do that not too badly.
Did you want each panel?
Yes, thank you.
From our organisation's perspective, what we're looking at is training investigations to be more person-centric and trauma-informed. And that's across all our vulnerabilities. And it's a learning that we've had through domestic and family violence. And that's across all our vulnerabilities. And and it's a learning that we've had through domestic and family violence. Um. The the good part is that our stake coordinator started Monday. The bad part is that she's now been given the first portfolio of let's look at training. Because I think training is one of the most strategic things an organisation can do. Because it looks at the service delivery gaps of the past and it future proves the future direction of the organisation. So it's not something that can be rushed. It's something that we have to look at deeply. And we've taken learnings from, and and again, I do apologise, but it is my portfolio. We've taken learnings from mental health and the training that we're developing um is across our tri-agencies. So it's training within Queensland Health, Mental Health, Queensland Ambulance, Queensland Police. And it's looking at intersectionality, because knowledge and education is very specific. It's very context-specific. So if we look at the intersectionalities, we really have an understanding of what that certain intersection would benefit from across training and education. So that's something that um that our senior sergeant has as a priority been been provided with to have a look at our training around disabilities.
Acting Deputy Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. No, I would just agree with the comments of my colleagues. I I'd said earlier, I think that we train from the recruit phase through to ongoing training, which is delivered through commands and then into specialist investigative courses and then custody management around um dealing with people within our care who are who are suffering a disability. I I I think that that is about um servicing and providing that support to victims, which um provides, again, I go back to that confidence, that reassurance, that ability to participate, which drives better outcomes, which drives better community relations and resilience in the community, which benefits both um which benefits the community essentially in the broader spectrum of just particular individuals. Um so yes, it's something that we continue to drive. Um the education, I think, working with the ADC and having them involved in the development of our education and delivery is providing that lived experience, potentially not through people suffering disability, but those um whose day job it is entirely to to uh work with the community. So I think that is of great benefit to us, but it is certainly something that we need to continue to be conscious of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Um thank you. Look, um I thank you particularly Acting Deputy Commissioner Cork in that the New South Wales Police Service provided with the job descriptions and the capabilities of the significant people within the New South Wales Police Service who have responsibility for disability. And I did notice that the age, they're they're obviously the twelve um aged crime prevention officers who appear at an operational level to report to both senior sergeants and then inspectors. But the one thing I did notice, that in their job descriptions and the outline of key knowledge and experience, the word disability or anything about disability does not appear in any of their job descriptions. And in terms of the scope of their work, there is a lot of text about terrorism a- and other things of that sort of high-profile nature. And it seems hard to me to understand how at any time someone who had disability would ever get a guernsey in a discussion with an officer who's primarily responsible for quite high-profile crimes like terrorism and politically motivated violence and things of that nature. And I did notice just standing outside of that as a programme manager for disability matters, that's a person who I think has the rank of a senior sergeant, they report to an eleven-twelve public servant. And I just sort of wonder with that sort of level of governance within the New South Wales Police Service, doesn't seem that it's likely that the SES of the New South Wales Police Service is very often going to discuss the sorts of matters that have come to the Royal Commission about law and justice, not only in this hearing, but in others.
John, could we get to a question?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, do you not, I'm I'm sorry about the extensive um explanation, but there seems to be a governance gap in the ability for these issues to get to the senior executive service and um get the kind of attention that you'd expect. How often does the senior executive service, for example, discuss the kind of issues that this Royal Commission has been hearing about this week?
So I I I meet with my, so me uh myself is the corporate sponsor at the executive level. Within each of the policing regions, so within each of the six policing regions, the seventh region specialists, I have a superintendent who I work with, which cascades uh down into the commands within the particular region. So we do have a cascading chain of responsibility from the ground level through those operational people, through their region advocates to myself as the corporate sponsor, we meet quarterly. In terms of um, I just take the characterisation of the Engagement in Hate Crime Unit. So the eleven-twelve programme officer is there at the equivalent rank of inspector and carries that weight within the organisation. And you'd be referring to Joanna Mackay as our individual there, who's the person who has been responsible for developing that um hate crime advertising campaign, which is to be rolled out late November, December. So in terms of um communication and intent, I'm quite satisfied that I'm in quite regular contact with people because involved in that as well, there are specific policy officers who work to me, which is their full-time job. So whilst um a range of the organisation is engaged in a range of activity, uh there are policy officers who draw that together and then form that outreach as well with stakeholders, including, as I said, at the operational level with the ADC on an ongoing and regular basis. So we can certainly look at ways that we can improve that. But I'm quite content for the moment that I'm uh getting across issues and the information flow is quite is quite um acceptable as far as as far as I'm concerned. I'm certainly not seeing any deficit. Where I do take um that point is in relation specifically to the eight crime prevention offices. And that's certainly something that will be reviewed during evaluation.
Well, I'd simply say you've given me a great description of what happens top-down. Again, the question I asked you was, how often does the senior executive service of the New South Wales Police Service discuss issues such as crime prevention amongst people with disability? I don't remember many circumstances in which an eleven-twelve or an inspector or someone of that level ever got to the senior executive meeting in the government department that I worked in. So I'm sort of wondering, um you know, just how often does this get on the agenda, given what this Royal Commission has heard about these matters?
Uh as I as I've indicated, my in my role as the corporate sponsor, often that it's happening and as part of the executive. If you're talking about at the commissioner's executive team level, that would happen when issues arise from time to time.
Thanks. I only have one question. What's a corporate sponsor?
The the commissioner appoints members from the executive to lead the organisation's response to particular issues of concern. So in my respect, I'm the corporate sponsor for communities. So I manage our responses to um multicultural community, the LGBTR community, our aging disability, people with disability and homeless community, and then customer service more broadly. What it does is have a member of the executive focused on those issues for and on behalf of the commissioner and her executive team.
Right, so it's part of the uh police terminology in New South Wales. I thought it might have something to do with getting tickets to football matches, that's all. I wasn't sure what it meant.
All right. No, I wish.
Yeah. I want to thank the members of the panel. This has been a very thoughtful and, as Commissioner Galbulay said, interesting uh discussion. And I do want to thank you each particularly for being so constructive in the way in which you've approached the issues about which we have heard this week. I think it's fair to say that for all of us, certainly for me, it's been eye-opening in the same sense as the term was used in today's discussion. And it's tremendously important that we have a constructive response from the agencies who are, in the end, perhaps responsibility which may be shared for dealing with these really important uh issues that affect people with disabilities. So I do want to thank you each for the contributions you've made to uh the hearing uh today and for the written material that's been provided. So thank you very much.
Um Commissioner, we'd now seek to have a break for about fifteen minutes. Um it's twenty past now.
Yeah, well, you're cheating a bit. It's twenty-two minutes past there.
Please, the Commissioner.
But uh we will we we will resume, let us say, at eleven forty.
It's now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mr Fraser.
Commissioners, the next witness is Miss Debbie Mitchell, the Deputy Tech for Disability and Carers of the Australian Government Department of Social Services. Miss Mitchell is present with us in the Brisbane hearing room. I ask that Miss Mitchell be affirmed.
Yes, thank you very much for returning to the commission yet again, Miss Mitchell, uh in order to give evidence. And thank you for the detailed written submission that you have, or written material that you have provided. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, uh she will administer the um affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Mitchell. I I'll ask Mr Fraser now to ask you some questions.
Now, Miss Mitchell, you provided a written statement to this commission dated twenty-one September two thousand and twenty-two, which includes a number of annexes numbered from DM hyphen one to DM hyphen thirty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have a copy of that with you?
I do.
Are the contents of that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
They are.
Commissioners, a copy of that statement is a tab fifty-eight of the tender bundle, followed by the annexes. I tend to that statement and the annexes and ask that the statement be marked as exhibit number twenty-eight dash nineteen, with the annexes to be marked sequentially from twenty-eight dash nineteen point one through to twenty-nine dash nineteen point three one.
Yes, uh Miss Mitchell's statement will be admitted into evidence and given the marking exhibit twenty-eight dash nineteen. And the the annexes to that statement will be admitted into evidence and be given the markings indicated by Mr Fraser.
Now, Miss Mitchell, um as I mentioned, you're the Deputy Secretary of the Department of Social Services. That's correct, isn't it?
That's correct. Deputy Secretary, Disabilities and Carers.
Which I'll refer to as the DSS for ease. Um and have you been following the evidence of this public hearing?
I haven't uh watched much of the evidence, but I've read uh most of the evidence.
Uh are you aware that uh a number of witnesses, being persons with disability, have given evidence to the effect that, aside from the police, they're not aware of any reporting line operated for the purpose of a person with disability reporting instances of violence and abuse?
Yes, I I'm aware of that.
Now, the federal government operates a hotline called the National Disability Abuse and Neglect Hotline, doesn't it?
It does.
And what's the purpose of that hotline?
So but the purpose of that hotline is to provide a complimentary service to allow people with disabilities to report abuse and neglect and to be provided an appropriate referral to an appropriate service.
The purpose of the hotline doesn't, um it's not to seek to resolve complaints, is it?
Uh there are, there there, the organisation um has a dual purpose. The hot the hotline number has a an abuse and neglect uh uh line, and it also has a complaints area. So that the person is triaged at the beginning of the call about whether they're making a complaint or whether they're making um an allegation of abuse or neglect.
And its purpose is to refer people to particular bodies or advocacy services, isn't it?
Correct. Unlimited referral.
Uh in your statement, paragraph twenty-one, you say that the hotline forms part of the Australian Government's fulfilment of some obligations under the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And you've listed those particular articles. Now, Australia ratified that convention in two thousand and eight, didn't it?
I believe so.
And the hotline was established in two thousand and one, wasn't it?
Yes.
And it's been in operation since two thousand and one?
Yes, it has.
Originally, it was established to provide a referral service to report abuse and neglect of people with disability in government-funded, state-territory and Commonwealth-funded disability services. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
But you say in your statement, uh as a paragraph fifty-five, that that's evolved over time to accept reports of abuse of people with disability in any context. Do you agree with that?
I am aware of that, and I think that's a a very uh appropriate evolution of um taking those complaints because the government and the Commonwealth is about providing no wrong-door approach.
Uh were you concerned to hear or have have read that in the course of this hearing that a number of witnesses with disability uh were not aware of the hotline?
As I, of course, of course. Um as I said, the hotline is a complimentary service. But um but as you said, the hotline was established in two thousand and one. And as I've given evidence previously, Australia's disability strategy was um released in uh November twenty twenty-one. And as part of that, uh there has been a number of actions taken under this strategy. One of them is the Disability Gateway, which is another uh way in which people can report uh uh those types of uh concerns or complaints. But um it's an opportunity now, I think, because the the hotline was commenced in tw- two thousand and one. We've had subsequent um maturing of our um policies around the disability strategy and around um standing up the disability gateway. I think it's timely to be looking at um the way in which we do promote the uh the hotline and and where it's best uh where it's best fit within the Commonwealth.
Well, focusing on the hotline for the moment, um in your statement, you deal with the number of calls or contacts made to the hotline on an annual basis. And if it's issue, that's on page thirty-seven, paragraph one hundred and eighty-six. Um there, it's noted that the hotline received a total of four hundred and sixty-seven contacts or calls for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Um have you calculated, noting the op- that the phone line operates Monday to Friday, doesn't it?
It does.
Um so have you calculated the average number of calls received per day for the hotline?
I know, I haven't done that calculation, but since the uh advent uh of the hotline, the calls have increased. So in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, thirteen, um the the calls were at two hundred and sixty-seven for the year. And in twenty twenty-one, they were at four hundred and sixty-eight. So, you know, the the hotline does have value, but I think I'm not sure of of the unmet demand. And that's, you know, what's come to light this week.
When you say the unmet demand, do you mean people ringing and not being able to get through?
No, I mean people having an understanding that that is a an avenue for them to report abuse and neglect.
Um. Well, I'm gonna ask you some questions now about how the hotline is promoted by or on behalf of the government. Um but first of all, in terms of context, when it was first established back in two thousand and one, it was operated by the organisation People with Disability Incorporated. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
But since around two thousand and twelve, it's been operated by Work Focused Australia. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what what is Work Focused Australia?
Uh it's an organisation that provides a number of services uh to the Commonwealth. They are like, uh they provide um They are like, they provide support and promote many of the services under the Disability Employment Service Programme.
The Disability Service Programme, particularly.
Disability Employment.
Employment, thank you, employment. Particularly job access services, is that right?
Job access is the broader employment service. This is around disability employment services.
So, in fact, in your statement, you say the hotline is now operated as part of the job access service, which you've defined.
Oh, yes. Can you tell me what paragraph you're referring to?
Paragraph forty-nine of your statement. So there you say the Job Access Service incorporates five previously separate services.
Yes.
I'll take you through the.
Job access. Yes, yes, go ahead, sorry.
So you have the Job Access Address, sorry, Advice Service and Website.
Yes.
And the Employment Assistance Fund.
Yes.
The National Disability Recruitment Service.
Yes.
And something called the Complaints Resolution and Referral Service, the CRS.
Yes. So that is the service I referred to before, where people go in in the same number as the hotline and the CRS and they are triaged at that point.
And that's actually a Complaints Resolution and Referral Service for users of Australian Government-funded services, is that right? And that's directed towards Disability Employment Services, so DES?
It could, it sits under that area, but it can take complaints about any issues about government-funded services.
The CRS?
Yes.
In your statement, you single out, though, don't you, Disability Employment Services, Australian Disability Enterprises and Disability Advocacy Services, paragraph fifty-nine. Now, it's correct to say, or might sound trite to say, that the Job Access Service is for the most part concerned with employment, isn't it?
Yes, for the most part.
Now, there's a distinction, isn't there, between the hotline, as I'm referring to it, and the CRS?
Yes.
Historically, they had different phone numbers, didn't they?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think in your statement, you say that, and you also now say, paragraph sixty-three, if it assists you, that they now have the same telephone number.
I apologize, I didn't recall that.
But now they operate under the same number, don't they?
They do, as I've just commented on.
Prior to twenty sixteen, the hotline and the CRS were promoted on different websites, but they have now been centralised on the Job Access website.
That's correct.
In your statement, at paragraph fifty-nine, if it assists, when referring to the characteristics of the hotline, you say one of its functions is to promote the hotline to clients, their carers, service providers, advocacy organisations and the broader community using information products. And if I can take you then down to paragraph one hundred and eighteen, because I want to ask you some questions about how this characteristic is met. This is on page twenty-six of your statement. So you address there, in response to question eleven, some of the steps taken, or these steps taken by the department and/or Work Focus to promote the hotline. Now, leaving to one side, the obligation, sorry, no, I'm, leaving to one side, the obligation that you refer to on workforce to assist the department to develop promotional material, there's really three main ways of promotion that you've referred to, paragraph one hundred and eighteen of your statement, is that correct? Firstly, you refer to participating at relevant conferences. Can I ask you about that? For the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year, are the relevant conferences those that you've referred to at paragraph one hundred and twenty-eight of your statement?
Yes.
So they are the HR Summit Melbourne, the National Disability Summit, Autism at Work Summit and the Disability Employment Australia Conference. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
And you'd agree that, at least from their, from their names, that three of those have an employment focus, don't they?
Yes, they do.
The second means of promotion, if I take you back up to paragraph one hundred and eighteen, what's the second means of promotion that you refer to? Hundred and eighteen A, sub-paragraph two. They promote the hotline by organising and developing employment seminars, is that right?
Delivering employment seminars.
Sorry, delivering employment seminars. And then thirdly, you refer to workshops, well, organising and delivering national webinars, which you define as workshops. Now, that's the third way, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's fair to say, isn't it, the third one, those workshops, have an employment focus, don't they?
That's correct, primarily.
And in fact, you've annexed to your statement at DM four hyphen twelve, PDF PowerPoint, sorry, a PDF of a PowerPoint presentation that you say Work Focus distributes to attendees after those workshops have been concluded. Can I just get you to have a look at that? Turn to that.
Could you tell me where it is in the bundle, please?
It's DM four hyphen twelve. I'm sure how much.
Number?
I'll bring it up on the screen for you. There's a couple of pages I'll get you to have a look at. So that's the first page of the PowerPoint, if it helps to assist your recollection. I'll turn up that done for you at the same time. If you, would you agree with me? I'm happy for you to look at the PowerPoint, but in its entirety, but I'll get you to look at page four of the PowerPoint presentation. So this is a reference, I think, on the bottom right-hand corner to the National Disability, then it's slightly obscured and then you can see half of the word hotline. You see that there? So that's, do you accept it or think that that might be a reference to the hotline we've been talking about?
Yes, I accept that.
And then if you go to page twenty-three of the PowerPoint, you can see here another reference to the hotline.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm happy for you to go and refresh yourself on the PowerPoint slide if you wish, but would you accept if I said to you that they are the only two references to the hotline in this PowerPoint presentation?
I can't find it in my bundle, but I would accept that.
And while this PowerPoint does include a phone number for Job Access, it doesn't actually include the phone number for the hotline.
I would accept that it's not evident on that page.
Now, noting that, of course, not all people with disability are seeking employment or are employed, why is the focus of the promotion of the hotline the employment space?
So the hotline is, doesn't have a focus on employment. It's historically sitting under that contract. And as I started to comment on at the beginning of my evidence, the contract has been running since two thousand and one and we have now released Australia's Disability Strategy and the Disability Gateway, which is a heavily promoted gateway to ensure that people with disabilities know which avenues to take to seek assistance, advocacy, information or through complaint mechanisms. So it's timely in the department that we review where that hotline is situated and that it's, we're just having a look at it.
Is it fair to characterise, let me ask the question these terms, do you think that the department should be doing more to inform the community about the existence of the hotline?
I think there's always opportunities to provide more information to the public to assist them with accessing any of our services. We review all of our services regularly, particularly our services that have been running for over eleven years. And the hotline is promoted through the Disability Gateway as well.
If I, can I ask you some questions about the operation of the hotline? Now, if someone has become aware of the hotline and they call up and provide the details of a complaint, Work Focus is required to make a record of that, is that correct? And if it helps, I'm at page eighteen, paragraph sixty-nine of your statement, which is an obligation, you refer to the obligation on Work Cover to provide the following information about the hotline, the number, location, nature of complaints, notifications, referrals and resolution outcomes.
So did you say you're page eighteen of my?
Page eighteen, paragraph sixty-nine, there's particular information that Work Focus has to provide to you, to the department, I should say.
Yes.
So you would accept that they are required to make a note of that when the complaint comes in on the phone?
Yes, in their quarterly and annual reports, as it's mentioned above.
And you say in your statement that Work Cover provides an analysis, this is at sub-paragraph B, an analysis of emerging trends in relation to number, location, nature of complaints. Are you able to expand on what you mean by analysis? What are they looking for?
Well, it would be a very basic analysis of the types of complaints, the location of complaints, as we've mentioned here. That helps the Commonwealth look at policies and procedures that we have. It is just one of the data sources that we use to make sure that we're designing and delivering programmes appropriately.
Well, if I can take you to paragraph one hundred and eighty-four, page thirty-seven of your statement. Now, you say there, and this is in the last sentence, and sorry, starting from the penultimate sentence, you say Work Cover provides the department with six monthly data reports in which the department publishes publicly. You then go on to say the department undertakes limited analysis of the data it receives from Work Focus about the hotline because the hotline is a referral service only. What constitutes the limited analysis that you've referred to there?
As I gave evidence just a moment ago, it is about the types of abuse and I'm not sure about location, but I think that might be part of it as well.
If someone has made a complaint and a referral is made by staff at the hotline to a particular third party, but, sorry, let me understand the process. So someone will ring up and the hotline staff then triage, if you like, the complaint and workout if it should be sent somewhere and where to send it. So that's an accurate way to put it?
That's my understanding.
And that referral might be made to a government department is one example.
It could be.
And it might also be made to more broadly, an advocacy service or something like that.
Yes.
What, and if it assists, I'm at paragraph one hundred and eighty-one of your statement. So once a complaint has been referred, if it hasn't, and there seems to be two, two things that happen. If it's a referral about it to a government organisation about a government-funded service, you call that a targeted matter? That's correct, isn't it?
That's what it's called in their policy manual.
So I'm asking if it's not a targeted matter, so it's not about a government service, what is the process of, or if any, is the process of follow-up once a referral's made off to a third party, say an advocacy service or something like that?
That is a deeply operational question that I don't have the answer for. I'd have to take that on notice. But I would assume that it is the same process as for a targeted matter, that there's follow-up to ensure that that person has, the information has been handed over and actions are being taken.
If I can take you to your statement, this is in an extra, DM four hyphen four, this is the Policies and Procedures Manual, and I'm at page one hundred and sixty-seven of that manual.
Yes?
You can see there, starting at page one sixty-six, which is the hotline timelines and responsiveness. If you follow the three, you can see there's a distinction drawn between target services matter and other matters. And if you see, if you follow me through in that table, there's a follow-up for a notify for target service matter only. Do you accept looking at that document that there's no reference to a follow-up with notify for non-target services matters?
I accept that. This is the Policy and Procedures Manual for the organisation, so I don't have recollection of that particular table.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's all the questions. I have Miss Mitchell.
Yes, thank you. I'll ask my colleagues whether they have any questions to put to you, Miss Mitchell.
I guess my question is, do you think that this issue of, you know, abuse and vilification in public places, do you think it is a Commonwealth issue or do you think it's more properly dealt with at a state and local level?
Commissioner, I think it's, I think it's everyone's issue. As the Deputy Secretary for Disabilities and Carers for the Commonwealth, as the disability champion for my organisation and also as a mother of a child who has a significant disability, I'm outraged that we continue to hear what we heard in the Commission this week. So the way that the Commonwealth has tried to address bringing all of these organisations together is through the National Disability, sorry, through Australia's Disability Strategy. But under that, we have, so I'm just reaching for my documents, we have the Safety Targeted Action Plan and accompanying other plans. We have the Emergency Management Targeted Action Plan and there are others. And a part of those plans is that all of the states and territories have, have signed up and identified areas where they think that they need to support people with disabilities. And I think that, given the evidence that's come today, there may be some areas of service delivery in the states and territories that it might be opportune to go back and have a look at to make sure that they're, that they're working together under these particular targeted action plans.
And that public safety would become explicit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
I was only going to ask, since you said that there was some restructure of this, use of this line, does decommissioning it altogether, given the very limited use it has, is that a likely possibility?
I haven't, we haven't made that determination yet. I'm not in a position to say whether we decommission.
Is it a possibility?
Well.
Anything is possible.
Everything is possible, Commissioner, but I do need to.
Is it being considered?
Commissioner, I need to look at the evidence to make sure that we have continuity of service for those people who are using it. As this year, we had over four hundred and sixty people use it. I wouldn't want them to not have that opportunity. So I need to make sure that if we decommission it or move it, that there's continuity of service for people.
Thank you, Mr Chief.
Paragraph one hundred and eighty-six indicates that, pardon me, in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, of the four hundred total number of contacts, the number that included a report of abuse and neglect was three hundred and ten. Given what we've heard this week and indeed what we've heard throughout the Royal Commission, would you agree that whatever the intention might have been, the hotline isn't really working very effectively as a mechanism for people with disability to report cases of abuse and in particular of the kind we've heard this week?
I would agree that there could be better use of it and there should, there could be better promotion, but where the Disability Gateway is, has been heavily promoted on television, on, in newspapers, in, out in the public, on social media. And I think if we were to look at what would be the best place for that to sit, it may well be in that area because it's heavily promoted and it's one door into disability services.
To take up the point that Commissioner Galbally made, in effect, there's not a lot of point, is there, to having a standalone Commonwealth service, unless it's integrated within all the other services that we've heard about. We've heard about the police and the responses the police can make. We've heard about other agencies that can assist with behaviour that may not meet the criminal threshold or which the police may not be very well equipped to deal with. We need to have a variety of organisations to which complaints can be made and can respond appropriately. Wouldn't the Commonwealth's role have to be integrated and coordinated? Wouldn't the Commonwealth's role have to be integrated and coordinated in the way in which we've heard today rather than standalone?
Uh, the Commonwealth has, um, a number of integrated compliance mechanisms. This is a very specific referral service, Commissioner, and has had a very specific purpose to refer about, uh, alleged abuse and neglect. It's not about integrating to the police services, but I agree with you, we should all be inter-, integrated across all states and territories.
I'm, I'm just wondering what the point of it is at the moment. What, what does it actually do for people with disability? Does it, does it make a material difference?
Uh, well, I haven't, I, I can't answer that question. It's, I haven't spoken to the individuals. But, you know, there have been four hundred and sixty-seven people contact.
That was in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, according to your statement was.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. And then of those, three hundred and ten were cases of alleged abuse or neglect. That's just not apparent to me what, what the point of this is.
Well, that, well, that, it's certainly something we will consider as part of, uh, the review of the hotline.
And the complaints that involve conduct by a member of the public, which is what we've been concerned about this week, that is to say, abuse of various kinds committed by strangers to people with disability in public places, that was a total of twelve that were reported in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. All right, well, these are things that might be looked at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Well, uh, Mr Praiser, there's nothing further from you?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Ms Mitchell, for giving evidence today, uh, again, and for the assistance you've provided to the Royal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, um, seated, five minute adjournment to organise the room for the next witnesses.
Yes, we're going to hear from, uh, Mr Fitzgerald and Ms Mackenzie.
Yes.
All right. Uh, so we'll adjourn for a few minutes in order to allow reconfiguration to the extent required.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Chris Bennett.
Um, Chair, the next witnesses are Commissioner Fitzgerald and Ms Mackenzie. Who appear?
Uh, Mr Fitzgerald, thank you very much for returning to the commission to give, uh, evidence again. Ms Mackenzie, thank you too for coming to the commission today to give, uh, evidence. We appreciate very much the assistance you have provided, uh, throughout the life of the commission actually and, uh, at the, uh, this hearing. Uh, if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who was sitting in front of me, she will administer the affirmation to each of you.
Commissioner Fitzgerald, I will read you the oath at the end.
The oath or affirmation, as the case may be.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms Mackenzie, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, thank you. I'll ask Ms Bennett now to ask you some questions.
Um, Commissioner Fitzgerald, can you tell the commissioners and those watching, uh, about your organisation, the Aging and Disability Commission?
Um, thanks, Council. Um, the Aging Disability Commission was established by the New South Wales Government in July of two thousand and nineteen. And, uh, the Office of Aging Disability Commissioner, which I hold, uh, is, um, defined in a special, um, Act of Parliament called the Aging and Disability Commissioner Act. Um, it has a, a number of functions, but in broad terms, the objects and principles of the organisation and the legislation is to protect and promote the rights of adults with disability.
Sorry, Commissioner, can I pause you there? Our, our interpreters might need you to slow down just a second.
So it's to protect and promote the rights of adults with disability. That's anybody over the age of eighteen with any form of disability. And older adults, older persons who are over the age of fifty, if they're indigenous, and sixty-five if they're not indigenous. The other aspect is to actually prevent and respond to, um, uh, the abuse, neglect and exploitation in relation to both those groups, those two cohorts. Just a couple of things that I think are important. The first is, um, older people include people with disability. Indeed, a very high percentage of older people, um, do in fact have increasing levels of disability. But in general terms, when we talk about adults with disability, they're people that have acquired disability at an early stage and had disability for much of their life, or have acquired it through accidents such as motor vehicle or workers' injuries. Uh, so whilst the two cohorts are separated, in fact, there is a crossover and we'll talk about it a little later. The second thing, I think, just to understand, it's a will and preference jurisdiction. By law, I'm required to take into account the views of older people and people with disabilities in relation to all of the matters uh, that we deal with. Um, and to be very clear about that, in relation to our investigative function, we're required to obtain the consent of the person that's affected, that is, the older person or the person with disability. Um, and thirdly, I might just say, in exercising my functions, uh, there are a number of principles that I'm required to follow, but one of those I think is worth reading. And that is adults with disability and older adults have the right to respect for their worth and dignity as individuals and to live free from abuse, neglect and exploitation. And then there are other aspects.
In the context of this hearing, why is it that that's a principle that's, that struck you?
Because at the end of the day, uh, one of the things in relation to people with disabilities is they experience all forms of abuse in all forms of settings, both in terms of public space, uh, within the family and community settings, but also in institutional environments. Um, so it's extremely important that the starting point is the dignity of people with disability. Uh, people who are abused, whether they're children or spouses or people with disability or older people, are only abused if they're not respected in our community and where the dignity of those persons is not protected and respected. So the starting point for us is the dignity of the person with disability, well, the older person, um, and from all else, um, uh, you know, our work follows.
Your work has, um, both a responsive and a proactive aspect, is that right?
Correct.
Can you tell the commissioners about the proactive element and the, the extent to which it incorporates education and community change and attitudes?
So you're absolutely correct. The commission has a number of functions, uh, one in relation to the prevention side. So we have an active requirement to engage in community, um, awareness, community engagement. Um, and that includes the support of seventeen collaboratives or eighteen collaboratives, I think it is now, uh, throughout New South Wales. Seventeen of those are in relation to elder abuse, but that includes older people with disability. And one is specifically in relation to abusive people with disability. Um, we conduct an enormous amount of training in relation to service providers, frontline workers, the community. Um, we liaise with all parts of the disability sector, both service providers, um, and advocacy groups. And to support our work, we have an expert panel, um, that, uh, guides us. We have a disability roundtable, we have an older person's roundtable, and we have a statutory board headed by Professor Eileen Baldry from the University of New South Wales. Uh, so we have a range of preventative measures that we engage with, um.
And, and of those, are, are any of them directed to the, the broad kind of cultural change that responds to the kind of issues we've been hearing about this week?
Because we're focused in relation to abuse, neglect and exploitation, um, most of our work and engagement are, is in relation to those people that are dealing with people with disability or older people. And so there's not been either the resources, uh, nor in fact the strategy in place in New South Wales, many other states to deal with a broader, um, educational campaign. So what we've had to do is to target where we think you'll get maximum value. And that is working with service providers, particularly their frontline workers. And the reason for that is they are a significant portion of the reporters of issues of concern. In relation to people with disabilities, the, the, by far the largest group of people that contact our helpline are frontline workers. In relation to older people, um, it is in fact other family members who want to raise concerns about other family members in their care of older people. So in the space of people with disabilities, it's all about, uh, service providers. But through the collaboratives, uh, what we're trying to do is to get out into a, a large range of regions and areas um, at a very local level, um, and we think that's an extremely important strategy. Lastly, we've also, uh, launched a strategy which will see us entering into an arrangement with each and every local government area in New South Wales over time. So that the local government is being used as a catalyst and a facilitator for, uh, both prevention and responding to abuse in their local area. And if we were successful, if we were able to engage every local government area in New South Wales over time, um, and the collaboratives operating and the service providers, we think we'd have enormous outreach in relation particularly to the preventative side.
Let's turn for a moment to the responsive side and we'll tie this together shortly, but what, what are the responsive functions?
So the commission, um, has a large number of, uh, functions and powers, but in short, we run the Aging and Disability Abuse Helpline.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm.
Slow it down.
Thank you.
Uh, which is about thirteen thousand calls per annum.
Yes.
We have a Community Support and Investigations Unit which deals with statutory reports and, uh, other matters. Um, and those two areas are, uh, the most significant areas of response that we actually have, um.
So does your office respond to things like violence and abuse in public places along the lines that we've heard of this week?
So the vast majority of, uh, abuse, uh, neglect and exploitation that we deal with is within the family and community settings. And the vast majority of that abuse is alleged to have occurred by family members. In relation to people with disability, um, it is a very substantially, um, parents of adults with disability and other family members of adults with disability. Nevertheless, uh, about seven percent of our matters are dealing with abuse by strangers or neighbours um, in relation to this space. So we do deal with it, but it's a small percentage of the overall, um, group of matters that we deal with.
And understanding that you're a young commission, um, is it fair that it hasn't been an area of particular focus to date?
In relation to elder abuse, if I can use that, the New South Wales Government funded a elder abuse helpline uh, for a number of years, about seven years before the operation of the commission. That was contracted to Catholic Healthcare and that operated. Through that, they would have picked up older people with disability, but there was nothing specifically for people with disability other than the work that the Ombudsman Office was doing in New South Wales. So the commission is, uh, a unique model around Australia where it combines two vulnerable adult groups into one agency. But very importantly, not only with a helpline function, but an absolute commitment to seeking to resolve issues where we can, but also to hold people to account. And there is a difference between the jurisdictions in relation to that. In New South Wales, people with disability, their advocacy bodies were very clear that whilst ultimately we needed to resolve the position so that people with disability would be safe, and that's our ultimate aim, they also wanted a commission that could in fact ultimately hold people to account. So one of the statutory obligations that we have is, even though it's a will and preference jurisdiction, I am required to refer matters to the police where I believe there is evidence of the commission of a crime. And that is without any consultation or consent by the person affected. Um, and similarly, but in a different way, if these are matters that would otherwise be dealt with by another regulatory agency like the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission or the Healthcare Complaints Commission or the Age Care Quality and Safety Commission, uh, we are required to refer matters to them again without consent of the affected party. Um, so it's an unusual model, but the, but there was in fact work in New South Wales in relation to these areas.
There was some evidence earlier from the police panel, I believe you were present in the room, about some of the conduct that might not reach the criminal threshold, that might be assisted by, um, an organisation that was able to receive reports and identify one of potentially a number of appropriate pathways. Is, is that the kind of, um, I guess, model that you're operating or capable of operating?
So very unusually, there's two things in our legislation. The first is there's no definition of what is abuse, neglect or exploitation. Indeed, we would be guided by the normal principles of the reasonable person test. What would a reasonable person believe? The second thing is very unusual is that, particularly in relation to elder abuse, um, there's a common definition in relation to what abuse is, but it's often constrained by saying that abuse within a relationship where there is an expectation of trust. Uh, our legislation does not have that. So effectively, we're able to deal with all matters that a reasonable person would regard as abuse, neglect and exploitation. So as a consequence of that, some of the matters that, uh, you've heard through the week could be reported to us. We would then have to make a determination, um, as to whether or not, uh, there was a criminal, uh, there was evidence of a criminal action and refer it to the police, or alternatively to deal with it, um, in different ways. Um, and I just might make the point here, the difficulty in this space is expectations. If a, uh, if abuse, vilification, harassment has occurred, um, then the question is, what is the expectation of the person coming to anybody, including ourselves? Um, so that's a very significant issue. Because there ma-, is unlikely to be any direct follow-up in relation to the actual incident, particularly if it was a stranger and they're not aware who that could be. Nevertheless, that can be referred to the police. Um, so I think the issue for those that come to us where they want to report, um, abuse by a stranger in a public place is what would be the expectation of that person coming to us and what would we then deal with that?
And, and what are the?
Can I just, uh, I'd just like to break down some of the figures. I understand what you're saying. But based on your annual report for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, which I think is the latest one, isn't it, that's available?
Uh, there's data available. Um, we, we release data every quarter. Uh, so the annual report is to the, uh, thirtieth of June twenty two, twenty twenty-two, but I think you have, sorry, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the next annual report's not due to Parliament until the end of November, but I think you may have updated figures.
All right. But in the twenty twenty-one year, um, you apparently received seven hundred and eighty-nine reports about adults with disability during that period. And that, I'm looking at page forty of the annual report and it's D R C dot one triple zero dot zero zero two two dot zero zero four two. And from that document at page forty, we see that sixty percent of the reports were from paid workers.
Correct.
Which would suggest that the majority of complaints related to the treatment of people with disability who were supported by carers in one way or another, presumably in accommodation.
Not necessarily. That would pick up, uh, that would pick up home care workers, disability support workers, local government workers, healthcare workers. It's basically frontline service providers and their workers, both, both paid and volunteers, uh, that would work with a person with a disability. So it's a broad range of workers. Uh, what is very clear in relation to adults with disability is the vast majority of matters that come to us don't come from the individual. Only thirteen percent actually come from the individual. And it is related.
Actually eighty-six out of the seven hundred and eighty-nine.
It's quite, it's, it's very small. And that's traditionally true with people with disability. People with physical disabilities with high levels of cognition are likely to report matters directly. Uh, people with cognitive and intellectual disabilities are almost certainly not likely to report directly. And people with psychosocial disabilities are a much more complex group. And sometimes they're able to report directly and other times they won't. Uh, but it's quite, but if you were looking at a systematic approach to this or a systemic approach to this, the assumption you'd have to make is most people with disability will use an intermediary in order for the issue to be raised or a third party will raise it on their behalf.
Yes, well, when you look at, uh, page forty-two, I'm just trying to get a sense of, uh, the matters we've dealt with this week and whether they would come to your attention. You've said seven percent of the seven hundred and eighty-nine, uh, involve complaints. involve complaints about conduct of strangers, and I take it that's a reference to the other category in figure twelve, which is fifty-three out of the seven hundred and eighty-nine.
We actually would pick up other as well as other community members, so within the scope of community members, that would.
There are sixteen of those.
And as well as neighbours, we we.
Yes.
So that's seven percent.
Well, but my, the point I'm getting at is that for the reasons I think you've just articulated, there seem to be relatively few complaints of the kind of
Correct.
incidents that we've been hearing about this week.
So if you look at the way in which the commission was established and much of the community information, it's very much targeted at abuse that takes place within the family and community settings, not necessarily the public space. So the legislation would permit it, we do receive it. But if you look at our materials and the way in which the commission was established by the New South Wales Parliament, its focus was to pick up abuse largely with those family and tightly held community settings. I think what you've been exploring this week and the discussions we've had with your staff previously says that the commission is able to actually pick up some of those matters, but it hasn't been promoted in that way to this point.
Yes, I wasn't being in any way critical. I understand. And you can see from that figure twelve on page forty-two that relatives were the subject of allegations in fifty-two percent of the reports. So a lot of the reports deal with relatives or other perpetrators known to the person with disability.
Yes, that's true. And in relation to people with disabilities, I, it's only about ten to twelve percent are actually in relation to partners and spouses, which brings you into the domestic violence area or family violence area in a very direct way. But the vast majority of abuse generally, the vast majority of abuse in Australia in relation to just about everything is related to families.
Commissioner Galvally, I think, had a question.
I think you've answered my question. I was also a bit bewildered. Because the service provider focus, they'd also, we've heard examples in other hearings about service provider problems too. So I was curious about that and also the place of advocates. And also the place of people with disabilities themselves.
So if I could just break that down into a couple of areas. The first thing is, service providers are a cause of a problem, but they're also part of the solution. But one of the things we're very clear about is going forward is we have to educate all frontline service workers in relation to the issue of abuse generally. Because they are the ones that see and identify and hopefully in time would respond when they see it. You're absolutely correct that service providers, particularly some of the larger institutional residential services, are also part of the difficulty.
We heard from Ms Butler, Julie Butler, yesterday that support workers can often say, just move on and don't bother about. And, you know, it was quite, she repeated that a number of times and really diverting people away from proper reporting.
So I think that's a really excellent observation. And our training, we've now got two modules specifically targeted to frontline workers. My aspiration is that every age care provider, every disability provider and every retirement village provider in New South Wales will have as part of its induction element in relation to abuse of people with disability. We're providing material for that, or they may provide their own. Now, that's the aspiration. And it's directly to deal with the issue you raise. The second point I just make is there's also a complexity in relation to carers. Carers are in fact part of the solution to support and protect and enhance the wellbeing of people with disability. They're also the largest group of people who are alleged to have abused. And so we deal a lot with carers, but it's a complex relationship because we need them, we need them to be supported. And if they're not well supported, intentionally or unintentionally, they will become part of the problem. On the other hand, there are some carers where abuse is clear and very significant and very dangerous. So we are dealing in a in a complex landscape. But the long and the short of it is, in relation to protecting people with disability in, say, the public space, the more people that are aware of abuse generally, the more chance we have of when somebody comes forward and identifies that they have suffered some form of abuse, harassment or that, action will be taken. The last point is, there is an incumbency on all of us to try to empower people with disability, to be able to be their own advocates. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner, advocacy in the disability space is critical. Upon my appointment as Commissioner, I was required under the statute to do a review of advocacy in New South Wales. I'm pleased to say the New South Wales Government accepted most of those recommendations. A permanent source of funding and a new structure for advocacy has been implemented in New South Wales. And that has given stability to this advocacy sector in this state. So I'm very pleased that. But from our point of view, advocates are an essential part of the the network and fabric of protecting and supporting people, including self-advocacy.
The police panel earlier frankly accepted that there was an under-reporting of the kinds of violence and abuse in public places from people with a disability, in part related to historic trust deficits with police forces. Is that something that that the A D C is in a position to assist with addressing in terms of providing a safe pathway for reporting?
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, that's a key part of our role. As the Commissioner mentioned before, it's in fact built into our legislation that if we receive a report that may provide evidence of the commission of a criminal offence, we must report it to police. There's actually no discretion there for us. So we do provide a direct pathway to get relevant matters across to police. Yeah, it's a it's a fair proportion of our work.
But i- is that a cause for concern, the the lack of, a person might not want to report to police? Is that something that needs to be examined?
Yes, but understand, I think the issue here is 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 complex, but you understand it, I think, well through this commission. The over-representation of people with disability as both victims and perpetrators in the criminal justice system is a shocking position. For years and years, researchers, including our Chair, Professor Ali Baldry, have been engaged in trying to understand, identify and seek action in relation to the over-representation of people with disability as victims and as alleged perpetrators. My own view is the police forces generally have made great improvements. What hasn't happened is an understanding that disability is core business to policing. The figures are extraordinary. You heard today in relation to South Australia, Queensland. It is a huge percentage of the work of police is dealing with people with disability. And yet I don't think we have a systemic understanding of that. We certainly don't have a systemic response to that. So whilst we're seeing good initiatives, I think that in relation to law enforcement generally, we're still not a long way along where we need to be in trying to deal with people with disability in a much more holistic way. And your Royal Commission will shine a spotlight on that, but so do have many others, including the Child Sexual Abuse Royal Commission, which looked at a number of institutions which provided services to children with disabilities. So I think what we are seeing is good initiatives, but I'm not quite sure there's a better understanding that really the core business of police is around people with disability. And particularly for those with cognitive and intellectual disabilities and those with psychosocial disabilities.
There was a mention by the Acting Deputy Commissioner about aging officers with particular responsibility for aging and disability. What's your observations about that initiative?
So the initiative of appointing aged crime prevention officers was an essential part of the architecture. So there was the establishment of the Aging Disability Commission in two thousand and nineteen. But in November of two thousand and eighteen, the the Government of New South Wales made a very significant commitment. As part of providing fifteen hundred additional police officers in New South Wales over a four-year period, fifty-six were meant to be allocated as aged crime prevention officers, which deal with crimes against older people, people with disabilities and people experiencing homelessness. It was an essential commitment, but it wasn't just an announcement, it was actually bodies. There would actually be this number of bodies that would come in as part of that fifteen hundred additional police. Twelve were appointed in the first eighteen months, and that was terrific. They are an essential part. And then suddenly, no further appointments have been made in the last eighteen months. You've heard from, we've met with Police Commissioner Webb, recently appointed, and with Assistant Commissioner Cook, recently appointed to that position, and as you've heard, there is now a review in relation to those appointments. But there has been no consultation in relation to why those additional forty-four positions were never filled. And there's been no consultation as to whether or not there is a a different approach about to be taken. So we hope the review will be one that will engage both the commission but also the sector in the review. Because the aged crime prevention officers, whilst they're only a part of the solution, they've become an integral part of spreading and disseminating information about people with disability and older people and people experiencing homelessness right throughout the police force. They've part of the collaboratives that we've support. They've become an extraordinarily important point of contact for community members. But they're not the investigators. Investigations are done by the normal traditional police officers, but they're a source of expertise. So we've encouraged the government to maintain their commitment. But as you've, as you've heard today, that those those particular positions and their functions are under review.
You've mentioned the collaboratives a number of times. Are you able to to explain to the commissioners where they fit in to your overall structure, or Ms Mackenzie perhaps?
Oh, the collaborative is a really important part of the work that we do and a really important part of broader safeguards for people with disability and older people, our two main cohorts.
And can I ask you a response to focus on people with disability for this?
Oh, for sure. So as the Commissioner mentioned earlier, we've got one specific disability, Abuse Prevention Collaborative, and I understand you'll hear from them later this afternoon, but they're really an important part of the prevention arm. So the, they bring together council members, health, police representatives and community support agencies, NGOs, together with a specific focus around better understanding and promoting abuse, prevention of abuse of people with disability. Importantly for us, there are a really important way of not just kind of raising awareness about abuse of people with disability, but also about where to report those matters, so mechanisms, processes that can be followed to to report. They're really critical in getting information out about the A D C, agency's better understanding, the work of the A D C and the matters to be encouraged to to report to us in relevant cases. But we also, we attend each of the collaborative meetings. We do a lot of work to help stand up those collaboratives initially, provide guidance written, but also direct guidance to collaboratives in their formation. And then we continue to attend their meetings. We don't run those meetings. We attend, we provide data to inform the initiatives that they undertake. So we provide data around the number of reports in their L G A, number of reports relating to people with disability, the types of abuse being reported, with the change in the number of reports, and provide information that can help to guide them as to the initiatives that they take in their local area. Again, to to help to drive prevention of abuse and greater awareness of of those matters.
And can can I just, what's the role, or how prominent is the role of people with disability in those collaboratives that are directed to that point?
Yeah, they're they're primarily made up of providers, so representatives of agencies. Within that, there may be direct people with disability, but but they are mainly inter-agency type of focus.
That includes advocacy services that operate in those particular areas. And in the disability area, one of the most important features is disability advocacy organisations that deal in multicultural communities. And so the, for example, Canterbury Baystown is an exceptionally multicultural community. And if you look at that collaborative, it's made up of very significantly ethnic groups, ethnic service providers and advocacy groups, which is a specific area of our concern going forward.
You said, Ms Mackenzie, that you give data to the collectives, the collaboratives. Do you get data back? Do they, are they data collection?
We don't necessarily get data back. What we do get, though, is really valuable information from them about what they're seeing in their local community, what they're hearing, what they're, in their specific roles, what they're seeing in relation to abuse, neglect and exploitation of adults with disability. That helps to inform our work. So it is a, it is a really useful and important information sharing mechanism that helps to drive our work but also helps to inform the local initiatives that they develop and take.
And do you collect data, Commissioner, to, or perhaps Ms Mackenzie, Commissioner, do you collect data to help inform the work that you're doing?
Absolutely. One of the things, there's a couple of things I just mentioned. The first thing is we produce data on a quarterly basis. The view that I have, the view that we have, is if I know it, the community should know it. And so it's a very clear policy we have. So we update our data quarterly. The second thing is we've expanded our database to try to look at impacts and outcomes. And Catherine can talk about that if you're interested in a moment. The third thing is that we provide data to government on an ongoing basis in relation to all of the areas of activities that we're involved in. So we are data-rich. And the reason for doing that is that we want to make sure that we are both making recommendations based on evidence, but also evolving our practices and our responses based on the evidence that we see. And obviously, the most important part of that is impact and outcomes, which are difficult to measure in this particular space. So that, the second thing is we're about to launch through the public internet a knowledge hub which we've been developing internally for the last twelve months, which will be the most up-to-date research hub in Australia. So it's not our research, but it's bringing together the knowledge and information from around Australia now. It's specifically around abuse, neglect and exploitation. But that knowledge hub will become available to the community shortly. So we're very, we're very conscious of good quality data, information and knowledge, and then disseminating that to particularly the disability and aging communities.
And one of the sources for your data is the police, as we heard from the Acting Deputy Commissioner. And you seem to generate your own data. You actually seek out information yourselves in addition to receiving from police and other organisations. Is that right?
So we, so. The, where our data comes from is from inquiries and reports. So the data that we capture and that we report on primarily is related to our handling of reports. So the data provided by police, police, what the Acting Deputy Commissioner was referring to is we obviously make a range of reports to police, but police also refer matters directly to us. So those matters are captured within our data. But yeah, our data relates to the reports that we've received.
Let me return now to the some of the evidence that we've heard this week. So people report harassment on the street by reason of their disability. And they've told their stories to this commission. Some of the police officers who've given evidence have said, well, some of this hasn't traditionally been recognised as meeting the criminal threshold. And perhaps it ought to be something that is reported through another way so that it is still taken into account and can feed a response that responds to culture and attitudes as well as other causal factors. Are you able to comment, Commissioner, on whether or not that's a model that that is reflective of what your organisation does or?
Listening to the evidence this morning from the police and reflecting on conversations that officers of your commission have had with us previously, the starting point for me is what is the purpose for seeking that information? What is the purpose by which we would encourage a person with a disability or an advocate on their behalf to come to us, or frankly, anybody else? And I want to be honest with you, at first I wasn't sure there was a clear purpose because the chances of anything meaningful happening would be minimal in relation to the matters that you've been talking about. But then it became very clear to us, I think there are three or four things that can happen. Firstly is we may be an aid for them to go to the police or have the matter referred to police where that is appropriate. And we do that, as Catherine has indicated, as part of our core business every day. The second thing is we may be able to identify underlying issues beyond the actual harassment or vilification that's taking place. People with disabilities and older people with disabilities suffer a a complex set of arrangements in their lives and circumstances. And so it may be a way by which that initial reporting of a particular matter actually. And so it may be a way by which that initial reporting of a particular matter actually leads to dealing with other matters. Um the second thing, the third thing is it may actually be able a way by which we can provide support, emotional or other support, either directly or through alternative agencies. Because uh vilification and harassment and abuse has a traumatic effect. And trauma is not well uh dealt with in the disability space. In fact, for so long, it was the view that people with disabilities somehow or another didn't suffer trauma. Everybody else would, but a person with a disability or a child would would in fact not suffer that. And when now we know from a lot of work, that's not true. And the last point I suppose is important is perhaps it does provide um information, informal information as to what's happening in our common and public spaces in a way that isn't currently being collected. And I suppose the underlying point about that is um I'm not at all sure that most people with disability would go to the police as their first point of contact in relation to these matters. And we've heard very encouraging uh comments from the police today, and I accept that at face value. Nevertheless, our uh my experience with people with disability, it is less likely that they would go directly to the police if there was an alternative way of responding to those issues. Um our view, of course, is that people with disability should be able to access the police, uh you know, in a very safe and secure way. But I'm not sure that's the view of people with disability. Um it may be changing, but certainly historically, uh that's not been a first point of call for many people with uh with disability. But we could be a way by which that occurs.
And is there a risk that that would create a side door? The people with disability are expected to go there and as opposed to a genuine choice?
One of the dangers in all public policy is when you talk about people with special needs and special circumstances. In a very good sense, uh it is an articulation and recognition of the characteristics and conditions it within which people live their lives and they are different. One of the dangers, however, is it also marginalises those groups. And so what you've got to do when we're looking at creating an environment is that the front door, that is to police, remains open and that they do everything in their power to make sure that a person with disability and or their advocate can come to the police and be treated respectfully, safely and be dealt with as any other citizen would be.
Can I, I think Commissioner Galblay has a question there.
I was just struck by the fact that this whole hearing emerged in some ways from peer support groups from the S S P A and their absence in the collaboration. You know, that the peer support groups of people with disabilities themselves, you know, that are very well organised enough to raise this issue to the commission, um that they're somehow missing and that they're a really important point. Because even yesterday, you know, the intellectual disability was represented as a peer support group as well as other disability.
Uh we welcome their participation. So when we look at a collaborative in a particular area, uh we and others, and generally these come from the the local area, the local government, try to identify those that have a particular interest in this area. And absolutely advocacy groups, self advocacy groups, peer support uh can and should be part of that collaborative. Uh but often where these collaboratives come from are actually the local government itself. And so there's a new collaborative being looked at in North Sydney, which has been initiated by the North Sydney Council. There's a new collaborative being looked at
Remember the slowing down part.
In the South West Sydney. Um and there, that again is a an initiative that's local. But to take your point, uh peer support groups, uh advocacy groups are more than welcome into those collaboratives.
The the final question I have for you, Commissioner, um concerns the scalability of the model that you uh have in New South Wales. Is it something that um is is it a sk- a model that can operate in the smaller states as well as larger states?
We've developed a community of practice which is convened by Catherine in relation to the states that have similar bodies. So the Adult Safeguarding Unit in South Australia, which is part of their Ministry of Health, the Adult Safeguarding Unit, which is attached to the Human Rights Commission in A C T. Um here it's in relation to the Public Guardian in Queensland and ourselves. Um there's no reason at all why a model similar to ours couldn't be established in each jurisdiction. The question is whether or not it would be co-located or integrated into other bodies that already exist, which is a model, um or whether or not you need a standalone. So I don't think, I don't think I'm at all sure about what models would apply in all of the states. What I think we've demonstrated is the function, the objectives, um and the general way in which we operate. Um so far appears to be an effective model. Um but as to how it would operate, uh no. The point that I would make is within five years, we, the big public policy issue for Australia will be the safeguarding of adults. Uh and uh we've already started to see that. Within which people with disability, older people, uh people experiencing homelessness and other groups uh will be part of those strategies. So that work is already emerging.
Commissioners, those are questions I had for Commissioner Fitzgerald and Ms Mackenzie.
Thank you. Uh I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you, Commissioner Galblay.
Well, I've sort of asked my questions, but um the L G A, your vision that you'd have one of these um in every L G A, I like, that's really harnessing the L G A energy, isn't it, at the local level? Which is sort of, sounds really very interesting.
There's two reasons for that, I think, Commissioner. Uh one is in New South Wales, the, each local government area is required to have a disability inclusion action plan, which is the main way by which New South Wales meets its obligations under the um now Australian Disability Strategy. I should just make a comment, we have a statutory function which is to monitor the implementation of the New South Wales Government's commitments under the um N D S and A D S, a function which actually has no resources, but nevertheless, we're doing it. Um the second thing is uh that what we're convinced about is that these issues are local. And both prevention and response requires local solutions. Um if we just look at the way in which people with disabilities live their lives, with whom they connect, who supports them, um it is absolutely clear that it is local. And so as a consequence, any strategy in relation to older people or people with disabilities has to have its, I I think its essence in local. And local governments are very important in this space. So we we think it's a very ambitious strategy. Uh but nevertheless, the fact that they do have in fact di- disability inclusion action plans and they are have an interest in this space gives me some confidence that we can engage with most of them over time.
And we heard yesterday about the Glenorkie, you know, action at local government level, which I thought was uh again, you know, very practical.
Commissioner Wright.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Um Commissioner Fitzgerald, um if I take you back to a comment you made during um your remarks earlier, you said, I don't think we have, and I think you mean the states generally, I I don't think we have a uh a systematic understanding of the over-representation of people with disabilities as victims and as um alleged perpetrators. And then you went on to say the core business of police is around people with disabilities, particularly um those with cognitive and psychosocial disabilities. It struck me this morning when I was um reading material from the New South Wales Police Service that the bulk of the people with the knowledge about disability are people that are not even in the S E S ranks of a very hierarchical organisation. Do you think that there's a gap in their governance to make sure that these incredibly critical things are discussed by their S E S and at the higher levels of the policing service?
Um Commissioner, I'm not in a position to comment specifically on the governance structure, but what is critical is if the issues in relation to people with disability aren't, have a specific, clear and overt place at the most senior levels of discussion in any institution, including police forces, then they will become marginalised. They will become overwhelmed by every other issue. The discussion around terrorism and hate crimes, it's a classic illustration of that. There is no possibility of the issues of people with disability being adequately dealt with in that model. That is simply not possible because we know the way in which institutions work. So what is important is that at the most high levels um of institutions, including uh police forces and law enforcement generally, the issues around people with disabilities or other vulnerable adults um has a place and a place that is not just one off every, you know, so often, it's a permanent place. As to what the best governance arrangements to achieve that um are, I'm not uh I'm not in a position to comment. Uh but these issues will become marginalised and overwhelmed by other issues. But the point that I was trying to make before is if you look at domestic violence, if you look at uh sexual abuse, if you look at all these areas, again, what we find is people with disabilities are a core group of people on either side of the equation. And so therefore my view is it is core business, you know. And and I don't think that that's been adequately recognised yet. Notwithstanding that, in New South Wales, uh you know, we do have this particular corporate sponsorship model. Um and you've heard from uh Assistant Commissioner Cook in relation to that. And uh I've now dealt with three commis- Assistant Commissioners in that role in three years. And uh and all have been sincere in their um, you know, attempts to make sure this issue does get raised.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh Commissioner Fitzgerald, you indicated, I think, that you changed your view somewhat uh on obtaining information from people with disability about their experiences of the kind we've heard this week. And you gave a number of examples, which are very telling, about the benefits to people with disability. Might there not be something else's worth? That we rely very heavily on the criminal law, but there are other mechanisms for bringing home to perpetrators that what they're doing is wrong and that needs to change. Would this not be a mechanism that would enable some of those people to be identified and to be provided either with the opportunity, maybe even compelled to undertake education programmes, change their behaviour? That would be another mechanism for doing that, wouldn't it?
Um Chair, assuming that you can identify, uh let me just use the term the wrongdoer, you know, the person that's actually undertaking it, that may be possible. I suspect in a lot of these matters, um that may not necessarily be the case. In the matters that we deal with, there are where the allegations are about family members or others. Uh part of our work is to in fact work with the uh person, the subject of the allegation, the alleged perpetrator. Because what's unique in this space is um most often the the person with the disability or the older person um will continue to live with or want a relationship with the person that's abusing them. After all, it's their son or daughter, brother or sister. Or in the case of uh young adults with disability, their parents. So part of our work is by nature trying to re-establish relationships that are safe uh for those individuals. To do that, you have to work with the person that is the subject of the allegation. Um we don't have a lot of mechanisms to do that. Um in the elder abuse space, uh there is funding by the Commonwealth and state governments in relation to mediation through Relationships Australia. But that is strictly in relation to older people, older people that have suffered abuse. There's no such funding for people with that have been affected by disability. But in the space we're in, uh this is all about relationships that have gone bad. In the area that you've been talking about this week, all that seven percent that we're dealing with, that's a very different type of abuse, very different circumstances. But your point, uh Chair, is if we don't deal with perpetrators, we won't solve the problem. Uh and that is true in all forms of abuse. Uh one of the great lessons out of the many Royal Commissions that have now been held is that if, uh well, I'll just say this, when I became Commissioner on the Royal Commission in Child Sexual Abuse, uh a person said to me, you can talk to a thousand victims, but if you don't talk to the perpetrators, you'll know nothing. And as a consequence of that, uh we did in fact talk to many perpetrators. And one of the lessons for me was that the person that said that was absolutely right. But more importantly, if we're trying to create safe environments, particularly where people, older people or people with disability, want to maintain a relationship, and they often do, then we are going to have to work with with people that are otherwise offenders. Having said that, there's a grip that that simply doesn't apply to. Uh they are uh they are not in that space. Um and that's particularly in relation to what we might call exploitation. Um Australia is uh Australians are reluctant to embrace that concept, however.
Which concept, that?
The concept of working with perpetrators or people that might offend. And uh what we have to do is come to the view that in fact you have to do work in that space as well. Um by tangent, the um Australian Human Rights Commission has just released a video in relation to elder abuse. Um and it's specifically targeted at perpetrators. Um and it is specifically targeted to that, and that's a very good initiative. Uh but and again, when I, elder abuse includes older people with disability.
But also been attempted in areas of domestic violence.
Yes, it is. Increasingly so. Increasingly so.
I understand that uh we're talking about different um, if you like, spaces when one area is that of abuse perpetrated by relatives, those within with regular contact with the person with disability and in the public space is different. But that doesn't mean you can't identify some of the perpetrators in the public space. Uh there may be, you you need some additional resources to do that, and it may be that the police have some involvement in it. But it's by no means, uh I I'm not sure we should be approaching this on the basis that if abuse is perpetrated by a stranger, there's no point in trying to find out who the stranger is.
Evidence given this morning indicated that there are a whole range of techniques that can be used, C C T Vs, and that was, I listened to that with interest. And of course, in our jurisdiction, should we become aware, if there's sufficient evidence, sorry, if if we come to the belief that there's evidence in relation to commission of crime, we would refer that to the police, absolutely. Uh no question about that. Uh the caution here is that in relation to vilification and harassment, um it may be that there are often no identifiable perpetrators.
Sure, that that always a possibility.
You get both. Now, the both those possibilities are real.
I was just gonna add, sorry, um was just, I guess it it depends on the nature of the matter. So there's a range of matters, for example, where concerns have been raised with us uh about um harassment, for example, by other um social housing tenants, or they might not know who they are. Uh and there's a lot of work that we have done and would uh continue to do in that space to seek to address the issue. Um uh that may not uh result in referral to police or may not involve um police, but is about uh working directly with the person with disability and looking and um uh housing to look at what options are available to resolve that situation.
Uh and I think I just should be very clear that not related to the issues you've been looking at this week, but the issues you've been looking at throughout your Royal Commission, um many of the people that end up abusing people with disabilities start off by actually trying to do the right thing. It's a it's a caring relationship, it's a relationship where they're trying to do the right thing. And over time, that changes. It may well be that the carer themselves is suffering uh a number of conditions and stresses. For example, I'll give you one, and that is gambling. Gambling is a huge problem in our society and a massive problem for carers. Um it can be that in fact they're incapable of actually caring and there's inadequate support or services being provided. It could be that the family member's expectation is that that person will care for the the person but actually provide no support other than to tell him or her how to do the job. So quite often we're dealing with relationships that have changed over time. Um and so it's the difference between the exploiter, the person that is physically violent to somebody, the person that's going out to to harm, um is a group of abusers. But there's another group where that has changed over time. And so a lot of the matters we try to resolve very quickly, very early. And we have very high success rate, uh if we can deal with that early. Um because it's actually a circumstance where the abuser did not intend for that abuse to occur. Nevertheless, it does exist and uh we find this particularly in relation to neglect. So it's a complex area. And all different, uh the forms of abuse we deal with have different drivers and different characteristics. So uh psychological abuse, financial abuse, physical abuse, neglect, sexual abuse and exploitation um have different drivers. And uh and to understand that is why we're uh so keen to make sure that our data and our actions are informed by evidence.
Thank you very much. Uh again, Commissioner Fitzgerald, for coming to the commission and giving evidence. Uh uh it has been very helpful today and thank you also, Ms Mackenzie, for your contribution. Uh we very much appreciate your insights and the work that you've been doing and of which we've learned a great deal during the life of the commission. So thank you very much.
Commissioners, we might now adjourn for lunch until two fifteen and um
Yes, all right. We shall adjourn until uh two fifteen.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms Bennett, I see it's two eighteen, so you get an extra three minutes.
Please, the Commissioner. The next witness is Cassie Mason, who appears.
Ms Mason, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to our Brisbane Hearing Room in order to give evidence today. We're very grateful for your assistance. I understand that you will take the affirmation, so if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who is sitting just in front of me, she will administer the affirmation too.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms Mason, can you tell the Commissioners your current job title?
So I'm the Acting Executive Director of the Office for Aging Well, which also makes me the Director of the Office for Aging Well. That's the statutory role under the Aging and Adult Safeguarding Act, which also makes me then the Director of the Adult Safeguarding Unit.
I think I can use your services.
Ms Mason, you've made a statement in response to a notice. Have you read the statement recently?
Yes.
Are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Chair, I tendered that statement and asked if it be marked Exhibit twenty eight dash two six, noting that I'll return to tender the police material a little later in the day.
Yes, Ms Mason's statement could be admitted into evidence and will be given the marking of Exhibit twenty eight dash twenty six. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Mason, focusing for a moment on the Adult Safeguarding Unit, can you tell the Commissioners about what that office is, what that unit is?
Sure, so this unit was established by an amendment bill that went, that was an election commitment of the previous incoming government. It was in response to some significant reports, particularly in relation to the complex issue of elder abuse. The, the unit is established under the Aging and Adult Safeguarding Act, as it's now known. It first came into operation in sort of the, in its actual operationality from the first of October twenty nineteen. It has a remit to, among other things, to respond to reports of abuse or neglect of adults who may be vulnerable. That definition of vulnerability is quite broad, but.
Just gonna pause you there.
Yeah.
Sorry, so you said it was established in response to the issue of elder abuse.
Correct.
When did the issue of disability, quite a separate issue, become part of your remit or that officer's remit?
So I guess a vulnerability, the definition of a vulnerable adult always included vulnerability by way of a disability, as well as aging and a number of other issues. For the first three years of operation, it was intended that the unit would only respond to elder abuse. There was a transitional provision. But in response to some recommendations from the Safeguarding Task Force, which was established by the then government in response to the tragic case of Ms Emery Smith, one of the recommendations, one of the recommendations was that the remit of the unit expand to include people with a disability ahead of schedule. So that expansion occurred at the beginning of October twenty twenty.
So I'm gonna direct these questions to people with disability. So to the extent that I understand your office does other things, let's focus on that aspect of its functions. So when did that expansion take place to encompass people with disability?
First of October twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay. And have you now scaled up, if you like, to 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 that role in full? Are you now at full capacity on that role?
Yes, so we further expanded to include the full definition of vulnerability from the first of October twenty twenty two. So we've been working with people with disability for now two years. But our actual expansion and our remit has further expanded at the beginning of last week.
And what's the nature of that expansion?
So that can include any adult who may be vulnerable by way of age, disability, ill health, social isolation, any other disadvantage, so it's very, very broad.
See. So how many staff do you have to respond in the unit?
Currently, including myself, we've got twenty three. The majority of those are adult safeguarding practitioners, so predominantly social workers. We have also a small sort of policy, community education, project officer component of that unit as well.
And is is it the case that one of your, the tasks of your unit is to respond to abuse?
Correct.
You have quite a broad definition of abuse in your act at section four.
Yes.
Extracting your statement, paragraph fourteen. Have you been, have you been watching or being briefed on the evidence this week?
Yes, I've certainly been been briefed on the evidence. I haven't been able to watch much of it, given our recent expansion and and that work, but certainly been briefed on those issues, yes.
And and so you will have heard some of the accounts of some of the lived experience witnesses of the types of harassment and abuse to which they have been subject?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that fall within your definition of abuse or within this definition of abuse as you understand it?
Yes, yes, it would. Interestingly, the Australian Law Reform Commission, which is one of those reports that I note, they specifically noted in that that safeguarding legislation and indeed safeguarding units should exclude that type of abuse and instead focus on the abuse within that relationship of of trust, which the previous Commissioner Fitzgerald mentioned. But our, I guess, definition as it stands could encompass that.
So it's fair to say, though, that with the twenty three staff that you presently have, an expansion of that might be a strain for you?
I guess it depends because at the minute, people who experience that type of abuse, they could call our unit for advice or support. Or if it was an ongoing risk of abuse they're experiencing, they could make a report. We haven't had that experience, they haven't called. So I don't know, I guess, what the, what the service demand would be for that because we haven't experienced that at this time.
So is it the case that your office, your, the unit could could respond, but at, so far it hasn't sought to engage in this area?
So we haven't specifically, so our collateral, our promotional material doesn't specifically focus on it. But likewise, we just haven't received any of those calls or reports that would then, I guess, facilitate a response from us.
Well, what sort of response would a person have if they reported the kind of harassment and abuse that has been the subject of evidence this week?
Yeah, I think that's really interesting because I guess there's a couple of components. So our Adult Safeguarding Unit, one of our functions, and indeed probably half of the calls we receive, are people seeking advice, support, information. The other half are people who are then making reports of abuse. In order to make a report of abuse, the risk of abuse needs to be ongoing. Now, that I guess could be interpreted in some of the instances that have been described this week, that the abuse, it could be ongoing if it's, I guess, if it's the same sort of people who are doing the abuse, but I guess if it's different people perpetrating the abuse in different contexts, then in terms of creating a report, it would be difficult to say that that was ongoing. So more likely it would be advice and support that we were giving.
I'm remembering the evidence of a lived experience witness this week who said, it feels like I am subjected to a campaign of harassment that is so effective because it is so decentralised.
Yeah.
Not sure if you've heard about that, but why does it matter if it's different people perpetrating the abuse? The experience of the person with disability is that they're constantly subject to abuse and are not safe in consequence.
And I, and I agree with that. I think, I think the issue from a service, our service model perspective, is what we would actually then do in response. So the way that we are currently set up, and I come back to the point that we were set up in response to the issue of elder abuse and that relationship of, or even with people with disability, that relationship of of trust or familial relationships or caring relationships, is we provide safeguarding support for a person in line with their wants and wishes that help to preserve those important relationships. And so it would be thinking about, and so we do things like assist them engage in more formal or indeed informal supports, to be able to do things, engage with other services, refer to legal services to to assist with, you know, changing documents or assist people with moving houses, those sorts of things. It would be what response would, I guess, the person would expect from us, I think is difficult when their perpetrator is unknown. Because what would we actually, what would we do? And I guess that's, that's the real question. If you don't, because as as was previously in the evidence for me today, we do, we work with family members and perpetrators around those complex family issues to support a person in safeguarding against abuse. If there's, if there's no perpetrator per se to to work with, it would be difficult.
Can I suggest, can I ask this hypothetical? What if the, what if the environment, the cultural attitudes, what if they're part of the perpetrator? Is that part of your remit or is it simply something that's outside your scope?
Look, I think in terms of creating community awareness, that would be something that we that we could participate in. Certainly in relation to a slightly different aspect, we have a campaign against tackling ageism. So similarly, it's not unforeseeable that we could have a similar campaign tackling this type of abuse or creating community awareness in respect of it. The other thing that I was thinking about in relation to what response we might provide if a person were to call us about this abuse. On the one hand, we could work with them around engaging more supports in their own life so that they weren't to become more vulnerable to or other sorts of abuse because they were more socially isolated. Obviously, we heard that sometimes people are being subject to abuse when they go out, they stop going out and then become more socially isolated. So we could work with them around, you know, having more supports in their life, coping strategies, mechanisms for that sort of thing, which I guess focuses on the, on the person rather than the problem, which isn't ideal. The other thing, I suppose, is our legislation does have quite significant powers, which we haven't used in this context before. But for example, if it was an unknown, unknown perpetrator, for example, we could, you know, work with the person to compel them to give us their name, date of birth, other information which we could then work with the person to, well, work to refer to Saipole, for example. Or we could apply to the Magistrates Court for a court order foreseeably to stop them from doing a certain thing or other in relation to that person. But that then means that we have to know who the perpetrators were. If it was completely unknown perpetrators, then it would be more of that community education.
I'm not sure why you're assuming, if you are, that the perpetrator of violence, abuse in a public place will necessarily be unknown and unknowable. I mean, there, there will be circumstances where the identity of the perpetrator can be ascertained by a number of means. But as I understand the current practice in your agency, you wouldn't seek to identify the perpetrator for the purposes of your work. It would only be, if you did anything at all, working with the person with disability who'd been the victim of the abuse or whatever.
I wouldn't rule out finding out who the perpetrator was. As I mentioned, we haven't had cause to do this because we haven't received the report. Our role is to work.
I imagine you won't receive them unless you make it clear that you're prepared to receive.
Yes, I think in our information, it doesn't preclude people from making those reports. But we certainly haven't focused on that because it hasn't been, I guess, the policy context that our unit was set up with. But not to say that we, that we couldn't. But we could find out who the perpetrator was. But again, it's a question, I think, of what would we, what would we do? What would the expected response be? Noting, we do have a range of powers, but what would be the end result is if we did find out who the person was, what would we do with that information? Because that's the bit, I guess, that there is nothing in our legislation which then leads us to the what next.
Oh, you might want to contact the police and give them that information. You might, having ascertained the identity of the perpetrator, determine that that person was part of an organisation, a school, for example. You might want to contact the school and say, look what your students are doing, do something about it. There are all sorts of things, I imagine, that could be done depending upon who the perpetrator was.
Yes, I agree. And if, and if we have, if we receive those reports, there's, I think, the way that our unit works is to create a bespoke approach to safeguard the person in line with their wants and particular circumstances. So there's no reason we couldn't do those things should we receive those kind of reports.
It's not, that's not something that you're presently publicly suggesting that people should be doing, though.
Correct, because it was specifically outside of the scope of the Australian Law Reform Commission recommendations about what safeguarding units should do. So we, our policy context behind how we were formed and what we do and how our service model is developed is based on the ALSC recommendations, which specifically preclude responding to that type of abuse.
There's nothing in your legislation that precludes you from doing that.
Correct, unless the report, unless the, I guess, the only issue is that ongoing nature of the abuse.
Well, is there any doubt in your mind that abuse of this kind is ongoing for people with a disability?
No, I agree, it is, it is ongoing. The difficulty being if it's different people. So our, our service model is currently, because of the policy context that we've created, is to deal with a perpetrator, that it's an ongoing perpetrator, and put in place strategies around people in line with their wishes to respond to that abuse and work with that perpetrator. If it's many different perpetrators, that becomes, I guess, more difficult from a service perspective.
It's fair to say your unit isn't really set up to respond to the issue that's been explored this week, is that right?
That's absolutely fair to say.
So it might, it might be that it could do so on the face of its, its legislation, but you have oriented it in a way that reflects the Law Reform Commission report that led to its establishment, is that right?
Absolutely correct, yes.
I don't have your, the complete act in front of me, and I'm just looking at the sections that are reproduced in your statement. Section four defines abuse as physical, sexual, emotional or psychological abuse of the vulnerable adult. Well, that is, I imagine, what you're relying on to say that abuse of the kind that we've heard about this week in public places would be within that definition.
Yes.
And then under the heading remit, you explain that a vulnerable adult is defined as an any adult person who, by reason of age, ill health, disability, social isolation, dependent on others or other disadvantages, is vulnerable to abuse. So it's not required from those provisions, there may be something else, but those provisions don't require a continuing relationship between perpetrator and victim.
That's correct, they don't.
And there's nothing else that does that.
There is a provision in the legislation, I think it's section twenty two from memory, that does talk about when a call to our unit will be taken as a report. And one of the, one of the factors of it will not be taken to be a report if the risk is not ongoing, an ongoing risk of abuse. And the example used in the legislation is that, for example, the person has moved to a different, a different residential address.
I see.
So.
Thank you.
Do you, you collect data about the reports that you do receive?
Correct, yes.
And do you have the kind of community relationship model that Commissioner Fitzgerald was talking about that assists you in doing that?
So the data that we collect is on the basis of calls to our phone line or reports to our unit via either our phone line or email address. So we collect our own data based on on that.
And do you feed that data to South Australia Police?
Not specifically, we do share a lot of information with South Australia Police. And they, that data is available in our annual report. But we don't specifically provide the, the breakdown of data to Saipole, no.
All right, and what sort of information do you receive from South Australia Police that might identify people with a disability, the kinds of risks that we're talking about? Is that the kind of information that gets exchanged?
The majority of information we get from Saipole is referrals about cases of abuse that they become aware of. The majority of information we get from Saipole is referrals about cases of abuse that they become aware of. But it's, it's, in, in every case that we've received so far, somebody known to the person. So not the similar cases of abuse that have been described this week.
How are people with disability involved in and guiding the approach of your organisation?
So when we were developing our code of practice, which is something that we, we needed to do under our legislation. We had a consultation with both older people, people with disability, a range of other people and their, and their carers. Who, other people who may be vulnerable and, and also the carers and supporters as well when developing our code of practice. We've also engaged an organisation called Think Human, who, to do some work with people with lived experience. Specifically people with disabilities about our collateral and information messaging. To ensure that our, our unit is accessible to people with disabilities and that they would feel comfortable reporting. Again, it is really framed in the context of people who are known to, to the person and perpetrating the abuse because it is framed around, as the previous commissioner mentioned in New South Wales. Preserving relationships that are important to people while putting in place strategies to mitigate abuse. So it is a different context to what we've been talking about this week. But we've certainly involved a number of disability advocacy and other organisations in our work. And to engage a range of people from the disability community and organisations that support people with a disability to ensure that they know about us and that they've been involved in our messaging. And ensuring that the way that our service is set up is appropriate for them.
What about at senior management levels though and ongoing guidance? Do you have any formal consultations with people with disability about how you carry out your role?
Not specifically with people with disability. We do have an advisory committee. Or an advisory group that does meet a number of times a year to provide advice on originally the establishment. But also the operation of the, the adult safeguarding unit. That does include a range of government and non-government organisations that represent people with disability. But not people with lived experience themselves on the operations. We have done, our recent consultation that Think Human worked with us on was around engaging people with lived experience about how we do our work and how we make an accessible service.
But no people with a disability?
They were people with a disability.
Sorry, on, on your advisory board?
So it's, it's an organisational group, so it's not, it doesn't include people with lived experience specifically, no.
Yes, and Think Human is a, an organisation that, oh, withdraw that, that's, those are the questions I have for this witness.
Thank you. Just before I ask my colleagues if they have questions, I'm looking at section 22 of your act. I don't think it has the effect that you suggested. The reason is that section 22 subsection three says a report will not be taken to be a report under this act. If, A, it relates only to alleged abuse that occurred before the commencement of the section. And there is no ongoing risk of abuse. It's, it's an anti-retrospectivity provision. There's nothing in section 22, as I read it, that requires any report relating to conduct after the act has been amended. That there's no requirement that there be an ongoing risk. That's the way I read it. But no doubt in due course you can get your own advice. I'll ask Commissioner Goldblum if she has any questions.
Thank you. I'm interested in the abuse prevention hubs. And I noticed that you have Purple Orange represented on that. And so that must include people with disabilities. So they're operating in partnership with community centres?
So the abuse prevention hubs is a project that we have been undertaking to, I guess, increase community capacity around the signs and awareness of abuse. Particularly in, in community centres where, which are trusted places in the community. As part of that piece of work, we engage with a range of organisations, including Purple Orange, around developing a toolkit. To inform the, the education that would be provided to community centres around abuse awareness. How to engage in conversations to, I guess, delve out some of the issues that if they suspect abuse. And then also act as, I guess, pathways to people reporting to our unit. So, so yeah, we did, we engaged with a range of, of organisations, including with people with, with lived experience as developing that toolkit.
Are they a little bit like the collaboration that, that the commissioner referred to this morning?
I guess a little bit. The intent is to, I get, you know, because we are a small unit. And we are, you know, in a government department, we want to increase the accessibility and the awareness. And, and places in the community that people feel comfortable talking about some of these issues. Noting that they are, our focus has been on, on, on abuse that is in the context of those family or care, trusted relationships. Where people often feel quite a deep shame around it. And so increasing that capacity of, of a friendly face in the community to actually raise those conversations and in referring to our unit.
Thank you.
So that's the intent.
Commissioner Ryan.
I have no questions, but thank you for coming, your evidence, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for your evidence today and for the written statement that we, we have. We appreciate your assistance, thank you.
We might have just five minutes to reorder the room for the next witness.
Yes, we'll adjourn for a few minutes and then we have a panel.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Dous.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, we have a panel comprising Renee Traynor from the Canterbury-Bankstown Abuse Prevention Collaborative. We've heard much about collaboratives this morning. And Mariam Vezada, who is here to talk to us about the Islamophobia register. I ask that the witnesses be respectively sworn and affirmed.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence this afternoon. We appreciate your attendance at our Brisbane hearing room. We look forward to the evidence you're going to give and we thank you for the material you have provided. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who's sitting just in front of me. Ms Traynor first, she will administer the affirmation to you and then Ms Vezada shall administer the oath to you. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms Traynor. Thank you, Ms Vezada. I will now ask Ms Dous to ask you some questions.
Thank you. Ms Traynor, I'll begin with you. You're here to talk to us about the Canterbury-Bankstown Abuse Prevention Collective. But you are a team leader from the Diversity and Inclusion Team at the Canterbury-Bankstown City Council.
Correct.
And the, the council performs the role of chair and convenor of the collaborative, if I can refer to it shorthand.
Yes, correct.
Would you please tell the Royal Commission briefly about your collaborative and what it does?
Yes, so the Canterbury-Bankstown Disability Abuse Prevention Collaborative, as we'll refer to as the collaborative because it is a long one. It's kind of been mentioned a bit today, but basically it was established out of the New South Wales Aging and Disability Commission. After they were formed, previously there was already elder abuse collaboratives established through the elder abuse helpline and resource unit. And once the Aging and Disability Commission was established, we kind of, I guess, they absorbed the elder abuse collaboratives that were already existing. And we were then encouraged by the ADC to establish a disability abuse prevention collaborative. So we were the first to, to establish one and we were provided guidance by the ADC to do that. So we, we sent out expressions of interest to local community stakeholders. For example, non-government organisations such as NDIS providers, as well as government organisations, including New South Wales Police. So we do have the aged crime prevention officer on the collaborative as well.
Okay, I might pause you there. Yeah, I feel like I could let you keep going. You'd use up all of our time talking about it. But just to, to come to that support that the, excuse me, that the New South Wales Commission provided you to establish, to what extent do they direct or control what it is that the collaborative does?
Yeah, I, I should also just mention that, so my role in relation to the collaborative, so as a team member, a former team member of mine that established the collaborative. So it's still kind of relatively new to me as well. So in terms of the guidance that they provided, I wasn't involved at that initial stages. But I do understand that they had a set of guidelines to kind of, I guess, assist collaboratives in getting started.
In terms of its day-to-day work though, do those guidelines govern what you have to do? Or does the collaborative have freedom to do what it wants to within a certain structure?
My understanding is it's more a, a set of guidelines to establish it. And then from then on, the collaborative work together to identify what needs to be done in their local community.
The collaborative has provided two documents for the Royal Commission. Firstly, there was a report dated 2021 and that was prepared by one of your team members, as I understand.
Correct, yeah.
But you have had an opportunity to read that.
Correct.
And then there was also a submission dated 2022.
Correct, yeah.
And you were involved in the preparation of that submission with your team?
I was, yeah.
Chair, I tender those documents, the 2021 report. I ask that it be marked Exhibit 28-30.
Yes, the report can be admitted into evidence given that marking, yes.
And the 2022 submission, I ask be marked 28-31.
That's a submission to us, that is to the Royal Commission.
Yes, it is, Commissioner.
Do we normally tender submissions? And do we need to do so?
It was a submission prepared in response to questions asked by the Royal Commission. Much in the form of what might also have been a statement.
But it was the answer to a notice, was it?
Voluntarily provided, not in response to a notice.
I think we'll just defer that for the moment. I just think it should be treated in the same way as other submissions. That's not to minimise its significance, it's just that we don't normally admit into evidence submissions unless there's a particular evidentiary reason for doing so.
Thank you, Chair. If I could turn to you now, Ms Vezada. You are the CEO of Media Diversity Australia. But you are also a lawyer, an author, a social commentator. And you've come here today to provide the Royal Commission with some information in relation to the Islamophobia register of Australia. And is it okay with you if I refer to that simply as the register? Can I just ask you to speak up a little?
Sure.
Thank you. So the Islamophobia register of Australia, the, the register is something that you established in order to fill what you saw as an information gap around certain occurrences.
That's right. I established the register because amongst my circle of friends to begin with, I was noticing an increase sort of anecdotally in incidence of Islamophobia. In that initial phase, it was more real world incidents. So now we classify it as sort of offline and online incidents. But I was noticing my friends were facing abuse on the streets, particularly those that were visibly Muslim. And it's also something I personally experienced as a Muslim woman who used to wear a hijab. And so it's based on all of those.
And you, we, sorry, the Royal Commission this week has heard evidence from witnesses who described barriers, barriers to reporting abuse that they experienced as people with disabilities, so abuse and violence in public places. And they said that those barriers included not knowing who to report it to. Experience from previously having made reports, not being believed, or no action being taken, the what's the point response. Fear of retribution and shame and embarrassment, and also re-traumatising at going through reporting. Were those similar to the barriers that you, you heard about in relation to Islamophobia?
Yeah, I would say that there definitely are similarities amongst the, the group. And I was heavily involved in the community at the time and still am. There was a lot of hesitation to come forward with incidents. There was assumptions made about whether something, for example, constituted assault or not. And it was, because of my legal background, I found myself just educating my circle of friends, but the community more broadly as to what constituted an assault. So for example, a, a, a real specific incident was a woman walking through Central Station in Sydney, which is nearing university. And being spat on by just a random person who then held anti-Muslim abuse at them. There was a lot of attitudes around, well, what do I do with that? I'm not going to go forward to the police. There's no, what is the point? Is that actually an offence? Where do I go? And so I found myself advising my friends at the time that actually this is what it constitutes and you should go forward. But there is a distrust of authorities amongst some minority communities, particularly the Australian Muslim community, and that has evolved over time. And so I found there was a need, given all of that, to establish a register of some kind to track those incidents initially.
And are you able to tell us if you observed any significance in you being a community-based, a local level reporting mechanism?
Yes, I believe that the reason the register was successful in having incidents reported to us over a period of time is that it was established by someone that was in the community. So I was involved fairly heavily at the time in a lot of community advocacy. And whilst I never wanted the register to be associated with one individual per se. It, it, it did, I think, help build the trust and the rapport because people knew that I had lived experience, so to speak. And that, that there was an element of trust, I wasn't necessarily going to do anything with that information. And they knew what the interest was and, and the, the long-term vision for the register. So I think the grassroots aspect was actually vital. But it also is a bit of a double-edged sword, if I can describe it as that, because the association with me personally also made the register and myself the target of a lot of online, in particular Islamophobia, over the course of many years.
And the register has evolved over time, but if I can just ask you to, to think back to the very beginning. What kind of resources did you need and did you have to set it up? How did you get it off the ground?
Yeah, I've described the register as a side hustle. I established it whilst I was on parental leave with my first child because I thought I had a lot of spare time. And again, it came, it was born out of a place of frustration and desperation and need. And so it really just started as a Facebook page. I even designed the logo myself, it was terrible. But it really didn't start with much. Over time, we were able to establish a website and reporting functions. So really it was a series of questions and a submission. But it started feeling, as I mentioned, via Facebook page and evolved over time. The questions that we now ask as part of the incident reporting has evolved because over the course of the eight years, we've taken a look at. And the, the key thing about the register is that it's an opportunity to report an incident. It's an opportunity for us to then analyse that data. And in the analysis of the data, we've then evolved the questions that we've asked over the course of the years to gather more information. And the idea with the reports, that we've had three reports published over the course of the eight or so years. And those reports again bring to life an issue that would otherwise not, not be documented. And the other thing I might also add, in a lot of the community advocacy that I did on behalf of the Australian Muslim community. I would often say to authorities, particularly New South Wales Police, who are I would often say to authorities, particularly New South Wales Police, who are engaged a lot, and, and also Victorian Police, that we were noticing a rise in incidence of Islamophobia. And I was often given the response that we are not seeing it. And if we are not seeing it, then there is no evidence to support what you're saying. And so that in itself actually also, um, was a reason as to the reg- the, the register's work was so important, to provide that quote-unquote evidence, um, so that authorities could actually develop policy, um, reform in response.
Thank you. Now, back to you, Ms Traynor, just, and to the collaborative. You tell us in your submission about the membership of the collaborative. And we see that that includes the Aging and Disability Commission, the Council, Disability Advocacy Services, Disability Employment Providers, Disability Legal Services, Domestic Violence Services, and a range of others, including New South Wales Police Force. And were you listening to the evidence this morning? Did you hear the New South Wales Acting Deputy Commissioner talking about Agpos this morning?
Yes, I did, yeah.
And, sorry, for the benefit of the trans- the transcript, that's aged crime prevention officers.
Yes, yes.
But you refer to them by the shorthand.
Um, oh, yeah, I just, yeah, aged crime prevention officer, yeah.
Yep. And the collaborative is not intended to receive reports of violence and abuse, that's correct?
Correct.
But you sometimes do.
Uh, I think it's not so much that necessarily the, um, reports are made to the collaborative, but, uh, the members might come along to, say, a meeting and say, I've, I've heard this. Um, it's not necessarily meeting the threshold for a report, but we would kind of support each other in guiding to where else they could go for support.
When you say not meeting the threshold for a report, what do you mean by that?
Uh, I think, um, one example was, and I'm not entirely, um, clear on this example, but they did say that something came about and it was more an advocacy need rather than, um, an abuse instance. Um, so then one of the advocacy services, so that, that's something that we can assist with. Yes, when reports, um, when anything that comes to the collaborative that would be, um, needed to be reported, it's, um, directly referred to the Aging and Disability, um, Abuse Helpline.
So if something comes in, it's really the informal networks that deal with it. You talk amongst, about it amongst yourself, find the right member to deal with that and they take it on.
Correct, yeah, but, um, anything that's, um, that is a form of abuse is referred straight to the Aging and Disability Helpline, Abuse Helpline.
And what about, um, things that might be criminal? Are they referred to New South Wales Police?
Uh, anything that would be in need of a report, so with the Aging and Crime Prevention Officer, um, present at the meeting, um, that would be something where they would say, yes, that's something that we can assist with, that's something that we would, um, be dealing with those criminal reports. Um, however, yeah, anything that's, um, abuse-related would, or like, we, I guess the, the purpose of the collaborative is always to be referring to the Aging and Disability Help, Abuse Helpline.
So it's really that, that single track out?
Correct, yeah.
And returning back to you, Ms Vazir, the, the purpose of the reporting, you said you wanted to fill, if I can paraphrase, fill an information gap?
That's right.
And to, to show that the level of the problem and try and generate some institutional responses?
That's right.
But you also mentioned that there was a, a degree of personal support and advocacy that you provide to people who made reports. Can you talk about the kinds of things that individuals sought your help with?
Um, in those initial, um, days when we, um, established the register, it was only a few of us, um, that were providing the support. The, the number that was provided was my own mobile. Um, and so when someone was submitting an incident report, I would get in contact with them, um, or rece- receive a phone call and provide immediate support. So sometimes that support included, um, psychological support, um, listening to them, hearing them out. Sometimes that, um, that, um, support was legal support, giving them some preliminary advice, although, um, it wasn't necessarily my area of expertise as a lawyer at the time. Um, and sometimes it was advocacy, sometimes it was explaining that, um, running them through the process of have you contacted the authorities, have you contacted the police, what is, you know, did you receive, um, an event number? These are the questions that you should ask, would you like me to contact them on your behalf? There were many instances where, with consent, I would contact the relevant police station and try and ensure that, as sort of, as an advocate, that they were taking the matter seriously and just providing support in that way.
Ms Traynor, are you aware of any members of the collaborative who do that kind of warm referral and advocacy on behalf of people who might bring their reports to the collaborative?
Uh, personally, I'm not aware. However, um, in the community sector, this is something that most service providers would be doing on a very regular basis, um, when they're working with their clients.
Is it something that perhaps the, the collaborative could take a more active role in with appropriate resources and training?
In terms of providing the advocacy for them?
And the, the support?
And the support, I think, yeah, it's something that, as community workers, we're doing all the time anyway. So I don't think it would be anything in addition in regards to just providing the support.
Is the, the very notion of capturing the data of receiving reports something that, as presently constructed, the collaborative could do?
Um, at present, it's not the purpose of the collaborative to be doing that. So it's purely set up to be guiding people to be reporting through the Aging and Disability Abuse Helpline. However, um, I know that we've spoken or heard today, um, that some people are not comfortable in reporting to police and they're not comfortable in possibly reporting through, um, the Aging and Disability Abuse Helpline. Um, so it could be warranted that, um, they might already have an established rapport with local service providers and that might be feel, they might feel more comfortable in, um, kind of disclosing that information to them. But the purpose at the moment of the collaborative is more if there's any kind of comments or, um, relating to abuse, that they direct them straight to the Aging and Disability Abuse Helpline.
And all, you, although you do receive some reports and refer them on, you don't gather any data about how many of those reports or what kind you receive?
Not presently, no.
There would be nothing to prevent you from doing that if that was something the collaborative wanted to do?
Um, I think it would, um, nothing to prevent us, but I think a, a solid structure would need to be created. Um, we'd be, need to be really mindful of duty of care and, um, and how we, the purpose of taking that, that data and what we, we, we would be doing with it. I think that, um, I heard you say earlier today, Chair, that anything's possible. And I think that that's something that the collaboratives could look into, but the model itself would need to be, um, adapted. And, um, I think some strong and clear policies around, around taking these reports.
If I could come back to you, Ms Vazir. Is there anything, uh, sorry, you, you've spoken already about the, the change in the register over time and the work that's been done on the questions for the data harvesting. Can you talk about the work that you've done with academics in formulating the questions? I don't want you to tell us the precise questions, but why that change in the questions has occurred? What were you trying to achieve?
Um, the questions were formulated by, um, Dr Derya Enner, who's involved in the register and, and academic at Charleston University. Um, and so she's really responsible for the evolving of the questions. What we've noticed every time we analyse the, the reports and the data is that, um, as incidents would come through, it would prompt us to evolve the questions. So for example, um, initially, we did not, one of the questions did not involve asking whether a proxy was, um, uh, submitting the report.
Just pause you there, can you explain what a proxy is?
So a proxy, uh, for the purposes of the reporting was in the ca- the most simple case was when a parent was reporting an incident on, on behalf of a child. Um, and so they'd be submitting the incident, but it related to an incident that, say, their sixteen-year-old had experienced during, for example, a soccer game. Um, so we evolved the questions over time in response to the incidents that were coming through. Obviously, when you start an organisation like this, we, that, we looked at some international, there was an international organisation set up doing something similar, we looked at, um, what they were doing. But of course, the, the nature of how it evolves in Australia is different. And so we evolved our questions based on the reporting that we were seeing, including later on us, you know, having, um, special categories for incident reports from witnesses. There were times where people were not directly involved in the incident in any way, had, uh, no interaction with the victims or the perpetrator, but simply witnessed an incident, say, on a train, and then would submit the details. But of course, didn't have the details of, um, the victims, uh, at all. But we would need to introduce categories to accommodate those different incidents that would come through.
What proportion of reports come from witnesses, not people who are in, like, victims or proxies?
Um, you're testing my memory now, but I think it, it, there was, um, if, it, it evolved over time. Um, I think the figure was somewhere in around thirty percent, but I have to double check that. Um, and what we noticed, what I do recall from the last report that came out, is that the witness incidence dropped. So from the, uh, the second report to the third report, the number of witnesses that were submitting incidents dropped. And so we, um, are utilising, and this is where the advocacy component comes in, through the research. We are utilising that as a means to engage in what we're calling an activating bystanders project. Um, where we are recognising that bystanders play an important role in, in step, stepping in where it's safe to do so. When an incident is happening live, particularly obviously a physical incident. Um, and so the research helps us develop, um, policy advocacy. Um, and in this case, seeing a drop-off rate helped us determine that we need to do more.
We've heard from a number of witnesses this week that they weren't aware of certain reporting mechanisms, in particular a hotline that, that Commonwealth Government runs. How did you, what steps did you take to make people aware of your reporting mechanism, the register?
Um, in those initial days and less so now, but in, in the first couple of years of the register's existence, I personally, uh, fronted the media quite a lot. Um, and as part of the advocacy, what we would do is with the consent of the victims, there were certain incidents that, uh, were quite horrific and fairly high, high-profile. So we would actually issue a press release, um, and the pre- press release was really me just putting it out on my Twitter page. Um, and the press release, we, we would get some journalists interested in that and they would run, um, news pieces on particular incidents. We'd give them access to speak with the consent of the victims, to the victims, to interview the victims. And it was the media attention that raised the profile of the existence of the Islamophobia Register, which in turn meant that people knew we existed. Initially, it was very community-based and it was just amongst the community and a- as the, um, the news kind of spread. Um, but over time, it was the media attention. And what I found is in order to get the media attention, uh, that there needed to be a personal angle. And so, um, I would, you know, in, in the drafting of the press release, there was that personal, it's, it's telling a human story and then making the media interested in that. And it was over time that, um, I, I know when I first started in this space, I don't think people understood the term Islamophobia at all. It was very rarely used. And I'm, I, I think over the course of time, the advocacy of many, many people, many organisations, were at a point where the, you know, the media attention about the incidents is also an education process around Islamophobia and how it manifests.
Did you use, um, organi- community organisations to create awareness among members of the Muslim community about the availability of this, whether through mosques or Islamic, uh, organisations?
Yes, we did. Um, we, um, in, it, it would be an issue that would come up in many talks that I gave publicly and, and also Dr Derya Enner. Um, so it, it was something that would come up. Um, it, what we've realised, of course, is that it takes a lot of concerted effort to do that. And it's never been my day job and something I've tried to do on the side. So one, I, I do think that over time, as we've been able to employ a staff member and have, like, proper resourcing, that we intend to run educational workshops, we already do to some extent. Um, and it, and it's also not just talking about, um, uh, Islamophobia, kind of saying, just report these incidents. There's also the educational component to it, um, and the implications. We've then, um, Dr Derya Enner has done additional research into the impact on children witnessing incidents of Islamophobia. Um, and she's also, you know, we also hope to do more research in terms of bystander intervention. Um, so there is a lot of broader implications.
The third, uh, report covers two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
Is there a fourth report in the works?
There is, um, and, uh, one of the things that we, we, so we hope to launch that March fifteen, which marks, um, the, uh, anniversary of the Christchurch terrorist attacks, but also marks the U N declared day of, um, the day to combat Islamophobia, which again was not a day that actually existed. Um, so the fourth report will be, um, analysing everything back from the very beginning. Um, and we find that when we don't have resourcing allocation at the moment, we, we didn't have funding for a really long time. We've only in the last two years had funding. And so without the funding, we can't do the awareness and then people forget that the register exists. So, um, but yes, the fourth report will be examining all of that and.
The third report was supported partly by Charleston University and the, uh, it's the Centre for Islamic Studies and Civilisation.
Yes.
Uh, the fourth report is being supported by which organisation?
To be confirmed. Um, uh, we, we're currently in discussions with a university, but, um, also other potential organisations that can support it. It really is about, um, uh, so in terms of the academics involved, it will be Dr Derya Enner from Charleston University. But in terms of the funding of the, the research itself and the, um, funding of the launch, that, that's, we're still settling on those.
I'm, I'm asking apart because I would have thought it's something that the, the major Islamic community organisation should be involved in. Are they being asked to fund?
To some extent, yes. Unfortunately, like many minority communities, there, there's lots of different projects on the go. But we certainly will be, um, approaching, um, all of the usual organisations to get their support. But what I've, yeah.
By the way, what does, what does I S R A stand for?
Sorry?
I S R A, what's that? It's, it's an organisation that gets, uh.
Isra is the Islamic Sciences Research Academy.
I see.
Um, and they've, um, they're, Dr Deryna, um, is employed by them and also works as an academic at Charleston. And so Isra, that organisation, has been involved, um, ve- from very early on, um, and provides a lot of in-kind and, um, financial support.
Thank you, Chair. Ms Traynor, so back to you and the collaborative. And I, you, you've already indicated that your involvement in the collaborative is, is quite new. But what can you tell us about what the collaborative did to get its identity, its brand out there in the way that Ms Vazir was describing for the register? How did the collaborative become a known entity?
Yeah, I think, um, as you said, it's still in its infancy. And, um, so the first meeting was February twenty twenty-one, um, and then we did have Covid during that time as well. So we did launch, um, the Disability Abuse, uh, Prevention Video, um, during, or last year. And, um, we are looking at relaunching that to try and get that branding out there a bit more. But the collaborative did, um, engage a person with disability to develop their logo, um, which they have put on some of the resources that, um, have been, that are available on the website. Um, the resources are, are provided by the A D C and so Aging and Disability Commission. And then we tailor them, um, with our local, um, logo and with our local contacts as well for support. And, um, but in terms of getting our branding and name out there, probably the establishment of the, or the launch of the video, um, is probably the biggest, um, thing, but we are looking at relaunching it, um, as well as launching the, um, the video which has been translated into three, um, community languages. Um, so that will be our, I guess, our next big, um, way of getting out and about into the community and getting the brand known.
So just stepping through some of that, you said that the resources are provided by the A D C. Does that mean they give you the information and you develop it into a product to put out? Or the product is already developed and you put your logo on it and put it out?
Uh, both. So the, um, A D C provided, um, some of their resources and we've put them up on our webpage, which is, um, ho- housed on council's website. Um, however, they also have, uh, like a template, um, where we could then add on, um, our logo as well as our, um, local key, like, local services that we can, um, so I think it's called a resource card. So then we put in the local Kenyatta Bankstown Support Services and put our logo onto that, which was their template that they provided.
And that's the card with the phone numbers.
Correct.
Who you can report various things to.
Correct, yeah.
In the submission, it describes the objective of the collaborative as being to increase awareness of abuse and neglect and exploitation and encourage earlier reporting to relevant organisations, along with improving referral pathways among local organisations. You've already spoken about the video and the, the resource card. And the video, is it fair to describe it as an? And the video, is it fair to describe it as an educative tool? To support victims and members of the community to detect and call out abuse?
Correct, and it's really identifying the different types of abuse. Um, and um, educating the community on your rights and the different types of abuse. And then where to go for um, support which is directed through to the A D C Abuse Helpline.
And the types of abuse that are identified in the video are focused on abuse being perpetra- perpetrated. By someone you know.
Correct, it is, yep.
Is there a, a plan, does the collaborative have a plan to put together some, either a similar education video? Or some other resource about abuse by someone you don't know, by a perpetrator who's a stranger, who's unidentifiable?
Yeah, I think that this came about um, in preparation of this public hearing that it kind of was brought to our attention a bit more. That we need to widen the scope of how we are getting the um, educational material out into the community. Because you're right, the video does say, someone you might know might do this, or someone you might know might do this. Um, so I think moving forward in our next um, lot of, you know, campaign material. Um, that's definitely something that we could be looking into, yeah.
Where does the collaborative get its funding to do this education?
Um, so we're, I guess, quite lucky, um, we're quite well resourced at Kenyatta Bankstown Council. So um, the council has provided most of the funding to establish what has been done so far with the collaborative. Um, so that involves establishing the logo and also the, the video. However, we did receive a grant from the A D C, um, which we used to translate that video into the community languages.
Yes, we, we heard earlier today that it is quite a multicultural local council area.
We are a very culturally diverse community, um, with speaking over one hundred and, nearly one hundred and thirty languages.
Has the video been translated into a hundred and thirty languages?
No, 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 sorry. Um, so we have translated the language, um, the video into three community languages. So um, Chinese, Vietnamese and Arabic. And um, I think part of the future projects that they're looking to do is to translate it into um, additional community languages.
In the twenty twenty one report, uh, and this is on page four, Commissioners, if you wanted to go there, but you don't need to. Uh, the collaborative identified four target groups for its information campaign. And it noted that those groups would require different information. The target groups were residents with disability, and I assume that means residents in the local council area.
Correct.
Carers and family, service providers and the general public.
Correct.
In respect of the general public, the report says, general public mostly require information about signs to look for. And where to report if they notice an adult with disability is being abused. So this comes back to the, the, the start of the campaign. That's, it's only, I'm sorry, I'll put that differently. Is this the first step about education? There could be another step about changing the attitudes of the kinds of things we've heard about this week.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, as I said, it's still very much in its infancy and we want to um, launch um, the video and the campaign. Again, and relaunch um, the English video as well. Um, and when we do um, launch that, we're looking at doing a, a specific launch um, in those community um, groups. That we've translated the video into, as well as a launch for the general community and for service providers as well. Um, so that's one way that we're kind of targeting our approach um, in that campaign. But we do need to focus on how we educate the different target groups, on how, um, the key messages of the collaborative.
Um, do you mind if I just ask you a question? Have you tested the video with people with disabilities themselves?
Yes, um, we did um, do some testing um, through one of the organizations or one of the members of the collaborative. And um, it was tested with people um, who had intellectual disabilities.
And other disabilities, have you been to other?
Um, from my understanding, it was just through that organization um, that helped us with getting the testing with people with intellectual disabilities.
Ms. Vaziria, you mentioned that you're looking to a campaign about activating bystanders. Have you, are you able to share with the Royal Commission anything that, any work that you've done on how that might be achieved? We've heard evidence this week about the need to turn bystanders into upstanders. And to, to motivate people to get involved where it's safe. Have you started work on that? Is there anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, um, it's still uh, in its infancy to some extent, but it is a conversation that we are having. With um, some social media platforms, including interest from Meta in particular, that can, um, who are keen to assist us. And once the, the content is developed, to amplify that across Instagram and Facebook in particular. Um, to, to ensure that it reaches the, the people that it needs to reach. But the campaign um, is, is going to be drawing on the findings from the three reports. Islamophobia in Australia reports and specifically, um, as I alluded to earlier. The, the specific statistic around the drop in um, sort of bystander support, so to speak. By the witness reporting. Um, and we want it to be a series of digital campaigns. Um, it just depends on how much budget we get and how much funding that we get. Um, but I think um, having done this work for a period of time now. It is about bringing um, awareness to the issue. Um, and also it, um, and there's a sense of empowerment that goes to victims, whether it's victims of Islamophobia or more broadly. When they know that there is awareness about this, that it's being called out, um, that they're, that it's um, not being ignored. Um, or suggested that because someone doesn't have um, some sort of uh, physical manifestation of abuse. That it didn't happen. And so um, the activating bystanders campaign, we hope will be digital campaign. That really um, educates the public more broadly about this is how, in the case of Islamophobia, this is how it manifests. Um, and these are situations that happen, that are real life incidents that have taken place. And this is an example of how to respond, where it's safe to do so. And so it is empowering people, we've seen successful campaigns across other. Um, whether it's across domestic and family violence or um, or sexual harassment. We've seen successful campaigns provided there's proper resourcing. I think it, it has the capacity to be really effective, but what we're envisaging is some um, videos. That show um, incidents playing out, based on incidents that have been reported through to the register. Um, and then um, sort of um, through showing ways in which you can respond that are safe to do so. And also what we want to include in that is um, based on the research, what are the implications of Islamophobia? When it's not challenged. So the mental health implications is huge. And to talk through the impact it has on young children in particular, there is a whole host of incidents reports across all three reports. That actually identify when the incident happened in the presence of young children. And so we find that that will be really compelling to include in a campaign like this.
On a, a different topic, you're aware that the Islamophobia register model has been picked up to be used. In other groups, or by other communities. Can you tell the Royal Commission what you know about that?
Yeah, um, so um, the Jambana Institute and the National Justice Project. Um, did approach myself a little while ago, um, expressing interest in wanting to, um, I guess duplicate, replicate the register. Um, and I, look, I take that's a source of great pride. Um, you know, this work may have started from my lived experience. And, and the lived experience of, of others involved, but um, it is an issue that's across the board. So um, I was involved in supporting them in those early days, Dr. Dedia and I, and I met with them. Um, gave them as much insight and access to as much information as possible to support them in the, in the setup. Um, and um, and was involved in the, the, um, and, and provided, um, you know, something for their press release. Um, the, the point I make is that I think it's both a, a good thing, but also a negative thing. That um, victims or people with lived experience have to take it upon themselves to start organizations like this. Um, and often it does come on a voluntary basis. Um, and I think, yeah, it does speak to a broader issue that um, sometimes there's very little support in place. And uh, victims are taken upon themselves to establish organizations. But um, it, I am really pleased that it is a model that others are considering it, um, considering in terms of other areas.
Do you have any suggestions on how we might lift the reporting burden off the individuals, off victims? And where it might be able to be better placed?
Um, I think lived experience definitely needs to be part of any um, framework. That is, you know, that, that is set up. But yes, I, I agree that the burden needs to be lifted off victims. And I think this is where there might not be an immediate answer. But authorities and, and um, that have the resourcing and the capacity perhaps need to work in partnership with impacted communities. And those with lived experience to develop a framework that is well resourced um, from the outset. Doesn't rely on someone like myself having to design my own logo and start an organization on Facebook. I think it, it's simple as that. It's recognizing that what's currently in place isn't good enough. Um, the status quo isn't working with respect to minority groups in particular. And so therefore more needs to be done in terms of funding, resourcing, um, support, um, in collaboration with community.
Back to you, Ms. Trainor. I understand that you have been able to follow some, but not all of the evidence this week, is that correct?
Yeah.
Did you hear the evidence of Ms. Butler who was talking in particular about an issue at the Glenorkie Bus Mall?
No, sorry, I didn't.
To very briefly summarize, Ms. Butler described an incident, well, a series of incidents. That occurred around a particular area in a local government, the Glenorkie City Council. And the action that was taken by a peer support group to, to self advocate. Engage with the council and address that issue. What I was wanting to know though is, from your perspective, from the collaborative's perspective. Are there particular hotspots within your city council? And have you had that kind of direct involvement with people with disability in your community? To identify and respond to that kind of hotspot issue?
I'm not aware of any hotspots being identified um, in discussions with the collaborative. Um, going back to when I said before, how possibly we could be um, doing some data collection there, that would be one benefit of that. If we had data collection at a local level, we would, we would be able to identify those hotspots. And, you know, target campaigns um, for those hotspot locations or the, or whatever might be targeted in that area. Um, but at this point in time, I'm not aware of any discussions um, within the collaborative about hotspots in Kenyatta Bankstown.
You, you've almost already answered my last question, but I will ask it anyway. Do you think the collaborative model could be adapted to become an entity? That can drive or contribute to the prevention of violence and abuse in public places? In your local, local council area?
I think that that's what we're currently already doing, but can you repeat the question for me? Was it in relation to actual data?
Uh, so responding to violence and abuse in public places in your local council area.
I think that that could be done through the campaigns that we're doing. We could be targeting a little bit more. And, and like the messaging of our campaign messages could be a bit more targeted towards that public spaces component. Because I think that's something at the moment we're not really focusing on. It's just a bit more broadly identifying what are the types of abuse and what are your rights. But I think that we, we do have a role to play in, in being a bit more targeted towards educating the community as well. Um, so that they can be active bystanders um, to, to put a, you know, prevent what's happening in public spaces and the abuse there.
And also to respond when it is happening?
Um, for individuals to respond or for the collaborative to respond?
Collaborative to respond when individuals suffer violence and abuse.
I think that um, that then comes back to that duty of care as well, what the, what the role is of the collaborative. If the model itself was to change and everyone had a clear understanding of what the purpose, and if that was part of the model, then yes, I definitely think that that's something that. Could be, could be done.
Thank you. Chair, those are my questions for the panel. I now hand them over to you.
Thank you very much. I'll inquire of my colleagues as to whether they have any questions to put to you. First, Commissioner Gill.
Um, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Trainor, do you have um, people with disabilities come and present? To the collaborative, so they really interact and meet people with disabilities? You know, the police and all the different members of the collaborative. Do you have a regular um, presence of people with disabilities?
At present, that hasn't been something that has happened to my knowledge. However, I do understand that there has been discussions of having peer support groups and organizations um, involved to be on the collaborative. Um, and I think, yeah, having presentations and having those lived experiences shared with the collaborative would be really beneficial. Um, however, having someone on the collaborative would be, would be fantastic as well. Um, I think in its infancy, when it was first getting set up, there was discussions about having members on the collaborative. Um, who were people with disability. However, they felt that at that present time, because it was in its infancy. Um, they didn't want to underutilize their expertise and their intellectual properties. So I'm looking at setting it up and now further developing that and having those peer support groups and members with, um, of people with disability as well.
Yes, I'm, I'm just extending it across to um, the register. And thinking that while, you know, you put the, the point that you'd like to be in partnership. But still people with lived experience should lead the register. And I just wondered in um, the data you collect, do you collect data on the inter, intersection? Between disability and being a member of the Muslim community and experiencing Islamophobia?
In fact, it was a conversation I was just having today, that unfortunately that is not um, something that we do at present. But certainly um, my involvement here today has meant that we will ensure that um, we refine our questions even further. And ensure those intersectional questions, in terms of intersectional identities, is captured going forward. Um, yeah, we haven't done that until now.
Have you picked up any hint of that, that if you're disabled and a member of the Muslim community, you're more likely to be targeted?
Yeah, I did actually go through the reports just to kind of see whether there was something like that that had come through. Not that, not that I could identify. I think if we did some more comprehensive analysis of the data, there, there could be. Certainly in the um, incidents that I'm aware of, that hasn't come through. I think that doesn't, that doesn't imply, of course, that it doesn't exist. Um, Australian Muslims are not homogeneous, they have multiple identities. And, and yeah, may identify very much so with um, several diversity dimensions. And so going forward, we certainly will ask that question. Um, and, and just in the, in the context of the register, um, being approached by, you know, Jambana Institute. And, and now through um, this particular mechanism. It has made me think about the register, its work, and whether it needs to expand to ensure it covers other diversity dimensions.
Thank you, thank you both.
Commissioner Ryan?
Ms. Vazada, just because I think we've sort of focused, I think, as a result of the council's presence today on Bankstown. And Canterbury, your organization, of course, takes complaints right across the country, doesn't it?
It does, that's right.
So how is it able to do that? Um, because I imagine for things like, it was to be applied to disability. One of the features of disability is it's ubiquitous, it's everywhere. Um, I noticed that it's possible to take complaints or to register complaints online. Do many people do that?
Yes, um, yeah, so we do take incident, incidents online. And um, as part of the, I suppose, um, one of some of the questions is where, where the victim is located. Um, so we, as the analysis, we have kind of identified quote unquote hotspots of Islamophobia during the reports. And so what it tends to do is correlate with where the vast majority of Australian Muslims live. Which um, happens to be New South Wales, Victoria, and then followed by Queensland. And the, the incident reports follows that, that sort of pattern. Um, but yeah, it, it, it is national, it does happen everywhere. And um, the reports that we produced, we've kind of consistently said that it is the tip of the iceberg. Um, and we've also noticed a correlation with, when particularly in the early years when I did a lot of media around this. That when, when there was media coverage or I was publicizing it across my social media platforms, we would see a spike in incidents that would come through. It's not to say that that happened that day, it's because people would be reminded of our existence. And sometimes they'd be reporting incidents that took place a year ago or several months ago. Um, and so I guess what we've refined over the years is that there are some pitfalls that come with people reporting. And there is a verification process. Um, but being, allowing online submissions is very important. In fact, we're evolving that even further because we're conscious that sometimes language is a barrier to reporting. And so what we want to introduce is services where, that there is translation um, available. That, that people can submit um, oral incidents by WhatsApp, for example. And then we can contact them and verify details. So we are trying to make it as easy and as accessible as possible to communities so that they can report.
This might be a hard question to answer, but um, by your estimate, um, within the Islamic communities in Australia. within the Islamic communities in Australia, is there, would the, would your reporting line have a high profile?
I would say yes, so to speak, depending on the state. So I think in New South Wales, there is a greater level of awareness of the Islamophobia registers' existence. And then that tends to drop in, say, Victorian Queensland, simply because a lot of our advocacy, and I'm physically present in New South Wales. But we are trying to grow that and we're doing that by partnering with the Islamic councils in each state. And one thing that we're doing right now is having partnerships with all the Muslim women's associations across the different states. And we're in the process of appointing an executive director so that I don't have to do it in my non-existent spare time. And we are also appointing a board with our first board meeting later next week.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you for coming and both of you for giving evidence today.
Something that I think that non-Muslim Australians don't understand is the diversity of the Islamic community. There tends to be an assumption, I think, that it is homogeneous, monolithic. Have you been able to reach in terms of people reporting to you all of the, or many of the different communities that constitute the Australian Islamic community?
Yes, I believe so. I believe we're very conscious of that and the fact that, you know, assumptions are often made. And so I'm very conscious of ensuring we reach everybody across the Australian Muslim community, which is incredibly broad and have very unique and different challenges. So yeah, we're trying to be very inclusive in that. The only other thing I would note is that it's not always Australian Muslims that are the victims. We've had several incidents of Sikh Australians who have been mistaken to be Islamic and, and have Islamic, anti-Islamic abuse hurled at them. So we've made the point that this is a social cohesion issue. There is a broader racism issue there. And we also recognise that sexism comes into play quite significantly because a vast majority of victims are women and the vast majority of perpetrators are men. So there are multi-layered issues that we have recognised as part of the work that we've been doing.
In public areas, if someone who has a tendency to be a perpetrator, it's probably easier to recognise women, depending upon their dress.
That's right. And we, there are many occasions where men become the targets because, for example, they have a beard. Or dressed in a particular way. And of course, in an online, in the online world, it's your name or the avatar. And my personal experience is that that is also the case. And I faced a sort of trolling that reached international, sort of an international phase. So I think it's the identity and that. And the only other point I'd make is that we've also noticed a correlation with media reports of Muslims more broadly and reports globally about Muslims, that that directly correlates to an increase in incidence of Islamophobia. And hence the work I, I now do as part of Media Diversity Australia is very important. I think across all diversity dimensions, be it disability or one's faith background or sexuality or any diversity dimension, the media and those in power play such a significant role in perpetuating stereotypes about those communities or, on the other hand, perhaps challenging those stereotypes. And I think, yeah, more work needs to be done in that space.
Thank you. And I just was interested, Ms Traynor, why do you think the Canterbury-Bankstown council has been responsive to the issues that have led to the creation of the collaborative?
I think that we have a really active sector in, in our local community. But that's not to say that that's not the case in other areas as well. And just having a lot of passionate workers as well and former team members as well who are pointed to.
I'm sorry, when you say we have a, there's a passion there, who are we?
Canterbury-Bankstown.
Sorry?
Canterbury-Bankstown as a community.
Everybody in Canterbury-Bankstown is passionate.
Well, no, I think it's more the service providers that we have and, and the community workers in Kenery-Bankstown and the team members that we've had working at council have been really passionate about this. I think also it came about because of the link with the elder abuse collaboratives. And Kenery-Bankstown is on two collaboratives, two elder abuse collaboratives, so we understood the model. So because we understood the model within our team, we were more inclined, I think, to, to start up the collaborative for the disability abuse prevention as well.
I join with my colleagues in thanking both of you very much for coming to the commission, giving your evidence and the benefit of your experiences. And thank you for the work that you are doing. It's very important, each of you. So thank you very much for your contribution to the commission, which we appreciate greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms Dousat, does that mean that we now adjourn until ten AM tomorrow?
That is correct, Chair. We'll resume tomorrow at ten AM with Ms Carly Hindlay.
Right. And can you give those who will no doubt be eagerly following the work of the Royal Commission and planning their day accordingly, what time we're likely to finish?
I am instructed that we are aiming for a, aiming to conclude at lunchtime.
Yes, I've heard that before. That's a, that's a concept of indeterminate content. What, would you care, perhaps you could discuss with Ms Bennett the definition of lunchtime?
We're aiming for one PM, Chair.
Thank you very much. That makes it a little more precise. Thank you. We'll adjourn until.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.